The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, August tenth, two thousand twenty-one, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Councilman Mark Kandarat.
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America. To the Republican Party, which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, and the earth.
Dear Lord, as we gather here tonight to do the business of the county, please continue to bless all of us in these trying times. Please try to bring us together and unite us by what may divide us. Let's try to be united and come together for a common purpose for the betterment of our community. Bless all those who have been affected.
I also thought it was.
Glad to give in to the last year. And as our county continues to rebound from the pandemic, continue to bless our families and keep us healthy and safe. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Kandarat. Next, our petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Ms. Hess?
Yes, Mr. President, we have reappointments tonight. I move Bonnie Richardson be reappointed to the Animal Control Commission and Terry Bush be reappointed to the St. Joe County Economic Development Commission.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bonnie Richardson is reappointed to the Animal Control Commission and Terry Bush is reappointed to the St. Joseph County Economic Development Commission. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one public hearing?
So much.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners.
President Morton, esteemed members of council, my name is Annie Castelney, president of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, offices on the seventh floor of this building. We're going to spend some quality time together tonight, so let's get it started. So the first, the Board of Commissioners has every month, we give a youth award, a business award, and a citizen award. So I'm very proud to this month announce that our youth of the month is the two thousand twenty-one Chet Wagner Eight Ten All-Star Softball State Champion, many of which are seated, probably all of which are seated up here in the front. Little League Baseball and softball are one of the most exciting experiences athletes, coaches, and their families and spectators can ever be a part of, and this team was no exception to that. The girls won the local district fourteen tournament, which included teams from Elkhart and St. Joe County. They went five and oh and didn't give up a single run in the entire district tournament. In the state tournament, held at Roseland Little League in DeMatha, the team lost their first pool play game six to one. So instead of hanging their heads and get down, they rebounded, came back, won six games in a row by a total score of forty-six to eleven, including the championship game against Zionsville Little League, six to two. There are over eighty little leagues in the state of Indiana, and not a single one of them was better than our Chet girls and their coaches. So I'm going to read off some names, and I'm fairly certain I'm going to mess too, so I apologize in advance for the names that I'm going to screw up. We have Bailey Ball. If you want to stand up when I read your name, that'd be great. Bailey Ball, Samantha Banta, L Bozer, Eddie Kaufman, Alex Conroy, Delancy Jenkins, Madeline Lambert, Lexi Liebovitz, Lyra Mabry, Mackenzie Miller, Taylor Reiser, Eddie Tamieschewski, Macy Yates, and Hayden Yokum. Manager Neil Miller, coaches Jason Ball and Tanner Liebovitz, and Jamie Pluta, who's the league president, and Marlon Culp, who's the district administrator. I want to give a special thanks to all these players, coaches, and their families for the hard work. And being part of the state tournament is one of the, I mean, one of the greatest experiences, least that I ever was a part of with my kids. I was never good enough, never good as Dieter or Mike Hammon, good enough to play in a state tournament myself. But when our kids do, it's just one of the most amazing things because you're playing a game, and you don't know if you're going to advance, and then you win, and then all your plans change. You're getting hotel rooms and doing all these great things. It's a great way to kind of come together and just bond. So it's my pleasure to announce the August Youth of the Month to the Chet Wagner All-Star Softball State Champions. Give him a round of applause. Unfortunately, the award wasn't ready today like we thought it was going to be, so we'll get that to people. Come on up. We can get a picture. It'll be great.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Great job, everybody.
All right. All right.
And you know who's on that team? Ken Con.
Left.
It's all teamwork. It's about teamwork, girls.
Yeah, exactly.
Good job, girls.
Now, you're more than welcome to stay for the next three hours of the meeting, but if you'd want to leave, now would be a fantastic time to do that.
Congratulations.
On another channel, there was this. Mrs. Hazel, she's on a date with Jacob.
So plenty of seats up front, folks, if you want to, you know, move yourself up. So speaking of amazing athletes, it's also our honor tonight to pay homage to our former county engineer. Jessica Clark began her career with St. Joseph County as a bright-eyed summer intern back in nineteen ninety-four. Upon the completion of her degree from Purdue University, she was hired as a design engineer with the Public Works Department. And finally, in two thousand and seven, her dream came true and was named county engineer of St. Joseph County. Jessica is the truest definition of a public servant, shying away from the limelight whenever possible. She came to work every day with one goal in mind: how do we keep our roads safe for those who travel them and improving our county infrastructure, all while having dwindling revenues and increased use? She played a key role in a number of areas, from ERP to the redevelopment commission to sewer and water. I don't think anyone can keep as many volleyballs in the air as Jessica. More important than all of those things, Jessica truly was one of the greatest resources that I've ever seen in St. Joseph County. The things she did, the things that she took off of everyone's plate were nothing short of amazing, but she always did it just because it was the right thing to do, not to get credit. I mean, she would even take the blame when the blame wasn't hers. So we are in great hands with Sky, but we truly, truly will miss Jessica. So it's my honor to present her with the highest award we can give anyone, a citizen of St. Joseph County, and that is a key to the county. So Jessica, please come up. And more than just a great county engineer as well, Jessica was just a great friend. So I will miss being able to stumble down the hallway and complain about something and get it fixed, probably before I even started complaining about it. So I think we also have another award that we would like to bestow.
This is a resolution honoring Ms. Clark. Resolution to the St. Joseph County Council. Whereas Jessica Clark began interning with the St. Joseph County Department of Public Works in nineteen ninety-four, and whereas Jessica Clark began full-time employment with the St. Joseph County Department of Public Works in nineteen ninety-seven, and whereas Jessica Clark was named county engineer in two thousand and seven, and whereas Jessica Clark as county engineer worked closely with the council on many infrastructure projects, and whereas in February of two thousand twenty-one, Jessica Clark left employment with St. Joseph County. And whereas the St. Joseph County Council wishes to honor Jessica Clark for her twenty-seven years of dedicated service to the citizens of St. Joseph County. Now therefore, be resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize and honor our former county engineer, Jessica Clark, P.E., and wish her continued success in her future career endeavors. Congratulations.
So Ms. Clark, any words you'd like to say? Here's also a.
Say, as soon as I start talking, I'll cry. Serving St. Joseph County is a privilege and one that I was truly blessed and very thankful that I had the opportunity to do so for the last twenty-seven years, twenty-four full-time, and started here as an intern. Probably bright-eyed, yes, but very thankful for spending the time here and appreciated working with each of you, appreciate working with the auditor, appreciate working with the commissioners, and always, pardon me, enjoyed serving the citizens and working with our residents to try to resolve their problems and make our community a place that they wanted to live in and they wanted to work in, and they wanted to raise their family in. So thank you. I really appreciate.
Ms. Kandarat?
If I could just say a couple of words, I think I've worked with Jessica all those years because I've been blessed enough to be her like she has for all those years. But, you know, over the years, you got dealt a lot of dirty cards. When the state legislature took away a lot of our road funding, and we had some tough decisions to make on the council, and we're always supported by you, your predecessors, Raleigh Farren, Susan Alas, Lori, they all eventually jumped ship, and you stuck it out and were here for a long time and did a lot of good. And I always know that the health and safety of our community and our motoring public, whether it was the major sewer project in Wyatt, or safe water in Granger, or great roads throughout our entire county. I mean, you always said the public's safety first to heart, and certainly can appreciate having worked with you and anybody that's enjoying our county today, the great amenities that we have. We can always point to you and say you were a large part of that, and thank you for your years of public service, and we'll be forever grateful.
That's a great idea.
Frank is telling me we are. Come on up, guys. Come up there.
That would be something else to mention, too, that the sacrifices that your kids and Ryan made all those years, late nights, late meetings, we appreciate all of that.
Maybe Ryan should get to cue it.
Ryan should.
Yeah.
Oh, there.
And like a good mom, she is on her way to softball tryouts, so we, all right.
Got big shoes to fill.
And we certainly saved the worst for last. It is my pleasure to pronounce, to present the two thousand twenty-one State of the County Address from the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Dieter and myself, President Morton, esteemed members of council, Auditor Hammond, the residents of St. Joseph County, thank you for the opportunity to once again stand before you tonight and talk about the great work being done here in the county of St. Joseph. Two thousand twenty was a year we will never forget. I think I can sum it up in three words: what the bleep. While we are still feeling the effects of the global pandemic that disrupted every aspect of our daily lives, I am proud of the hard work, ingenuity, and commitment shown by every county department. Time and again, as new obstacles arose, our employees found creative ways to meet each new challenge as an opportunity to better serve our citizens. For over a year, Dr. Fox, Mayor Mueller, Jeff Ray, and I met on a regular basis, keeping our community informed on COVID activity. The conversations weren't always easy, and a consensus was not always reached, but a unified voice never wavered, along with our commitment to keeping our community safe. It would be impossible for me to point out every accomplishment of each department, but I will do my best. This year, thirty-three departments submitted reports. I will try and be brief and go through them, but rest assured, you will get a copy of this in your email tomorrow that has all the great work that our departments presented for us. Adult Probation has been working on reducing recidivism rates, the continued development of the Pre-Trial Services Division. They completed a total of one thousand one hundred and forty-seven assessments and looked to maximize the release of low-risk offenders from being unnecessarily detained in the county jail due to financial constraints. The department was also awarded grants from IDOC, an Indiana Office of Court Services, for the continued operations of domestic violence case processing under the direction of Judge Hurley. Archives received seven hundred and thirty-six boxes. They continue to focus on updating and merging their databases, and recently, the county purchased the building that houses Archives, so we have a permanent home for the county records for years to come. The assessor completed the third of cyclical reassessment, Phase Two of approximately thirty thousand residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural parcels that processed four thousand six hundred and ninety-one appeals and completed a review and assessment of over ten thousand business personal property accounts. The auditor spent much of two thousand twenty responding to COVID, to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. They initiated a task force of community leaders, health professionals, and local elected officials to address homelessness that resulted in the Motels For Now program, one of the first times the county operated in that space as a way to at least begin to address low-barrier housing for our community. They prepared weekly CARES Act funds reporting and worked with the treasurer to be one of the few counties in Indiana that administers the federal rental assistance program at the local level. Within forty-eight hours of the mandated building closure, IT department was able to transition almost exclusively in-person workforce to a work-from-home workforce, responding to almost seven thousand employee help desk tickets, about four hundred of them probably mine. Our IT department was able to navigate supply chain issues, maintain critical infrastructures, reinforce VPN technologies, and drove initial remote teleconferencing strategies. Because of our IT department, our other departments were able to continue to serve the citizens of the county from home with no disruption of services. The building department was well poised to move to a remote work office. Through the implementation of a paperless plan review, inspection, and permitting process, staff was able to process, to continue uninterrupted during the pandemic. They issued ten thousand three hundred and thirty building permits, performed fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety-four inspections, and conducted one hundred and ninety-two plan reviews. Permits were processed in an average of two minutes and thirty seconds. The circuit court was able to secure a grant from Indiana Superior Court to purchase six new magnetometers and install ballistic protection in the courtroom benches. The clerk office issued one thousand five hundred and six marriage license. They oversaw presidential election during a global pandemic, processed a record one thousand, one hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight voters while working with the Health Department to ensure each vote center was safe for all. The Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau provided services to two hundred and seventy-two families involving two hundred and thirty-one children. They conducted co-parenting counseling workshops to address parental skills, co-parenting skills, and high conflict issues for parents. The Ducom Center was able to shift the majority of their clients to home detention to reduce the number of housed at the center. Despite the challenges from the pandemic, St. Joseph County Community Corrections continues to have one of the lowest recidivism rates in the state. The Emergency Management Agency was tasked with delivering personal protective equipment to first responders all throughout the county. The Department of Health worked tirelessly trying to keep our community safe, and they served as a resource across the entire region. In all my years in local government, I've not received as many compliments as we received for the vaccine clinic that was run at St. Edward Center. It was an incredible operation, staffed with hundreds of volunteers and the Health Department staff. To see everyone come together, that's one of the best things we've ever done in St. Joe County. The History Museum welcomed the new director last year, Brian Harding. While most events had to be canceled, they still had over six thousand visitors. Human Resources worked to continue to bring the best benefit offerings to employees and their families. The department spent much of last year working one-on-one with employees and department heads, navigating the temporary employment laws regarding COVID. They also hired a risk manager who will be focusing on personal health and safety trainings. Planning and zoning welcomed a new executive director in two thousand twenty, Abby Wiles. We couldn't be happier that she has joined our team. Immediately, Abby began working to create a new comprehensive plan for the county for the first time in almost twenty years. She is working on new property maintenance codes, a code enforcement model for all county properties as well. Economic development was focused on several grant opportunities. The FEMA Home Buyout Program, which to date is closed on eleven out of twenty-one total properties, and one that will be hopefully acquired by the end of the month. It's important to note that all these are voluntary acquisitions. One of the issues that came out of the severe flooding that we had a few years ago was those folks did not or could not be in those homes. So economic development went out, found this FEMA grant, and in large part thanks to Bill, Chris, and Jessica, were able to put this together so we can provide relief to those families who could no longer live in those homes. We're also going through a scope of work to modify some of those properties for fire trainings. So the Southwest Central Fire Territory is going to use some of those homes as training sites for live-fire activities. All properties are returned to open green space in perpetuity per FEMA guidelines. Public Works completed over ten point four million dollars in community investment on their road and bridge program and improved approximately one hundred centerline miles of roads throughout the county. Major projects including planning for broadband expansion project in New Carlisle, extending sidewalks along Jefferson Boulevard between Elder and State Road three thirty-one, and the stormwater management project at Bendix Woods County Park. Public Works also, as we just noted, said goodbye to our longtime county engineer Jessica Clark. We also said goodbye to Chip Porter, who was our county highway engineer, and he had been, his wealth of knowledge is something that's going to be very difficult for us to replace. He went on to be county engineer in Steuben County, but rest assured, Sky Matters has taken over the helm, and softball injury aside, Public Works remains in good hands, questionable ankles. The Surveyor used two thousand twenty to scan survey files to an online portal. This online resource now has all surveys that have been submitted, as well as section corner ties, BPS point witness sheets, original surveys from eighteen twenty-seven, eighteen thirty-two, original survey notes, and yes, Mike Hammond, various field books can all be found online without having to enter the county city building and dig through paper files. At the Juvenile Justice Center, for the first time in history of St. Joe County, the CASA program was able to provide an advocate for each of the eight hundred and ninety-three children that were educated as a child in need of services. That is simply amazing that we were able to do that, thanks to the leadership of Judge Chikowitz and Brenda there. I mean, it's, that is one of, also one of the best things we've ever done in St. Joe County. They also initiated two new programs, Bridgeling, a correctional residential program serving adolescents who are approaching eighteen years of age, and Safe Passage, a crisis stabilization and diagnostic services program. The Department of Maintenance worked tirelessly to enact COVID mitigation strategies, including installing barriers at counters to keep both employees and the public safe, increased cleaning protocols throughout the entire county city building and other buildings, adding additional cleaning staff to ensure common touchpoints were cleaned hourly, a Herculean task for sure. The Department of Parks and Recreation benefited the public health and economic development by managing over thirteen hundred acres of public access green space, river and stream corridors, wetlands, and woods. Last year, they welcomed three hundred ninety-five thousand visitors. And since COVID closed many facilities and venues, outdoor recreation was still strongly encouraged. They saw a twenty-nine percent increase in usage from the year before. We are very fortunate to have such a great park system here in St. Joe County. We also, since last we met, Evy Kirkwood decided to retire and move on to other patches. So we'll be seeing her in a month or two when we present her a key to the county as well, but Steve Soloson has stepped in and does a great job. The Sheriff Department services forty percent of the population of St. Joseph County and is responsible for eighty-five percent of the county's land area. So it's amazing with the resources that they have, they do the work that they do. The Jail Division booked six thousand three hundred and fifty-six inmates in two thousand twenty, and thankfully, none of them were named Costelny. For an average daily population of five hundred and two inmates, the Road Patrol Detective Bureau also moved into the new home on Lathrop, repurposing the former Central Highway Garage into a new sheriff post. This reutilization of existing county asset allowed for a central repository for evidence and consolidated three divisions into one for better efficiency. Portage Manor averaged an occupancy of one hundred and twenty-two residents, and saw only twelve test positive for COVID, another amazing feat. Thankfully, all fully recovered as well. Portage Manor continues to be in need of building repairs and is looking at potential grant funding to help offset these costs. A special thanks to Commissioner Dieter, who led a large group of volunteers that cleaned up the Portage Manor Woods for the first time in a long time, which had long been an eyesore and quite frankly, an area of danger. And thank you to many of the council members who came out and helped that as well. Procurement diversified sourcing techniques while expanding our vendor databases enabled the sourcing critical materials for county departments, including scarce cleaning supplies and much-needed PPA, PPE. Of course, their biggest lift has been implementing the new enterprise resource management system, and that lift will continue, release for the next year. We'll be talking about that next year. The prosecuting attorney transitioned its criminal division to be entirely paperless. With assistance from community partners, they held Fresh Start Friday clinics. Deputy prosecutors and externs with Notre Dame Law School assisted low-income individuals with petitions for expungement to waive driver's license reinstated, reinstatement fees, resulting in over seven hundred filings with the county courts. Some people drove over twenty hours to clear decades-long criminal convictions. Especially want to recognize Magistrate Andre Gammidge, who worked with community leaders and the prosecutor's office to help make these Fresh Start Fridays a reality, another great service that we can provide to those folks who need it the most. The Public Safety Communications Consortium received four hundred thousand calls and twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-six incoming and outgoing texts in two thousand twenty, a slight decrease from the year before. and economic development by managing over 1,300 acres of public access green space, river and stream corridors, wetlands and woods. Last year, they welcomed 395,000 visitors. And since COVID closed many facilities and venues, outdoor recreation was still strongly encouraged. They saw a 29% increase in usage from the year before. We are very fortunate to have such a great park system here in St. Joe County. We also, since last we met, Evy Kirkwood decided to retire and move on to other patches. So we'll be seeing her in a month or two when we present her a key to the county as well. But Steve Slosson has stepped in and does a great job. The Sheriff Department services 40% of the population of St. Joseph County and is responsible for 85% of the county's land area. So it's amazing with the resources that they have, they do the work that they do. The jail division booked 6,356 inmates in 2020, and thankfully, none of them were named Costelney. For an average daily population of 502 inmates, the Road Patrol Detective Bureau also moved into the new home on Lathrop, repurposing the former Central Highway Garage into a new sheriff post. This reutilization of existing county asset allowed for a central repository for evidence and consolidated three divisions into one for better efficiency. Portage Manor averaged an occupancy of 122 residents, and so only 12 test positive for COVID, another amazing feat. Thankfully, all fully recovered as well. Portage Manor continues to be in need of building repairs and is looking at potential grant funding to help offset these costs. A special thanks to Commissioner Dieter, who led a large group of volunteers that cleaned up the Portage Manor Woods for the first time in a long time, which had long been an eyesore and quite frankly, an area of danger. And thank you to many of the council members who came out and helped that as well. Procurement diversified sourcing techniques while expanding our vendor databases enabled the sourcing critical materials for county departments, including scarce cleaning supplies and much-needed PPA, PPE. Of course, their biggest lift has been implementing the new enterprise resource management system. And that lift will continue release for the next year. We'll be talking about that next year. The prosecuting attorney transitioned its criminal division to be entirely paperless. With assistance from community partners, they held Fresh Start Friday clinics. Deputy prosecutors and externs with Notre Dame Law School assisted low-income individuals with petitions for expungement to waive driver's license reinstated reinstatement fees, resulting in over 700 filings with the county courts. Some people drove over 20 hours to clear decades-long criminal convictions. Especially want to recognize Magistrate Andre Gammidge, who worked with community leaders in the prosecutor's office to help make these fresh start Fridays a reality. Another great service that we can provide to those folks who need it the most. The Public Safety Communications Consortium received 400,000 calls and 12,526 incoming and outgoing texts in 2020, a slight decrease from the year before. The public defender have 21 felony deputies who handled 1,819 cases in 2020. The JJC public defenders handled more than 640 cases. The department also handled 2,500 misdemeanor cases. The PUE Extension Office was open, was able to host 45 learning events with almost 1,300 participants. They were able to pivot to a virtual four-age fair in 2020, and we're glad they were able to hold an in-person fair just a few weeks ago. The recorder recorded 47,641 documents, an increase of by 15 to 20%. The Soil and Water Conservation District completed its final year of a three-year multi-county clean water Indiana grant projects. Last year through the grant, they planted 766 acres of cover crops to help improve soil health. They continue to be a resources for our farming community, not just in St. Joe County, but they partner with folks in Marshall County and others as well. Superior Court was able to smoothly transition from high-volume in-person dockets to high-volume daily dockets with litigants appearing virtually. And despite the pandemic, they conducted over 50 jury trials. The treasurer collected 264 million in taxes last year, a decrease of 10 million from the year before. The total amount of money held in investments was 64.74 million, a decrease of 16 million from 2019. Voter registration updated 30,194 voter records through voter registration applications. The office assisted the clerk's office and the St. Joseph County Election Board with implementing vote centers during the presidential election. Lastly, weights and measures continued to inspect small scales, fuel dispensers, taxis, pharmacy scales, and vehicle scales. In late fall 2020, the county council, being you, approved two property tax abatements for development projects on the east side of the county. Eco Plastics, a family-owned local business in the Twin Branch Industrial Park, was looking to expand their building footprint and acquired additional machinery and added new employees. The other abatement was to assist the development of a public water system, which is one of its, there's not many of those across the state. So we are definitely ahead of things as it relates to that. For the hills at St. Joe Farms, a new residential subdivision located southwest of Bittersweet and Anderson Roads. What's key about this is one of the areas that we know that we are in need of is single-family housing. So here's a housing development that can address one of those needs that we've identified as being a critical piece. As a result of the action that you took, Eco Plastics has moved operations and equipment to the new building and have exceeded the hiring projections based on the new business opportunities. And the Hills Project is well underway with most of the infrastructure complete and several home sites under construction. On the west side of the county, work is nearly 75% complete on the construction of a new 27-mile redundant fiber conduit project that will serve the new Carlisle area. And a 1.4-mile town fiber loop being developed off the main conduit line will be awarded for construction and hopefully completed sometime in 2021. Access to fiber is another critical component as we look to do anything in. And if COVID taught us anything, the reliance on fiber is more important now than ever because that's how many people conducted their day-to-day lives. Also on the western side of the county, Unifrax is working to finalize permits for the construction of their new equipment for a $13 million project product line expansion with their existing facility on Smilex Road. This new line will create materials used in lithium ion batteries and will also have electric vehicle applications. They hope this new product line will generate a new building that will provide nearly $80 million of additional growth as well as an investment in new jobs. Speaking of electrical vehicles, the recent announcement of the purchase of the former AM General H2 Building by Electric Last Mile Solutions, or ELMs, point to a very bright future for the 20-year-old facility and the county's role in the production of electric vehicles. ELMs anticipates production of their Class 1 EV commercial vehicle this fall and has announced a larger EV delivery vehicle that could go into production as soon as 2022. ELMs has secured a local partnership with the University of Notre Dame to use these vehicles on campus as part of the university's commitment to sustainability. And it is anticipated that ELMs vehicles will be a leader in the market for EV delivery vehicles. We had this conversation a few years ago with another company. The nice thing about ELMs is they actually have contracts to produce the vehicles. So that anticipation to be starting in the next few months. And this could really just be the beginning of a significant expansion, uh, expansion of green technology. And speaking of that, we continue to use green technology and development as part of our local economic development strategy between supporting existing local businesses like Innovate Innovative Solar, General Stamping and Metalworks, Steel Warehouse and Lock Joint Tube that have been supplying the solar industry for years. Our new projects like the Unifrax expansion, ELMs EV delivery vehicles. The future for St. Joseph County is green. The recent completion of the new AEP solar farm on Cleveland Road and the larger solar farm proposed in New Carlisle show that we truly can be a leader in green technology and renewable energies. Several county departments started taking online payments for the first time last year. Online forums have been created to apply for everything from birth certificates to zoning variance requests. We want to make it as easy as we can for citizens to do business with St. Joe County. So they have to reduce the barriers as best we can. Speaking of new technology, it was installed in these very council chambers, and we're enjoying that technology now. Is to allow for better remote participation by both council and board members. But more importantly, the public, instead of having to drive, find a parking space, enter the building, find a place to sit, can join public meetings from the privacy and safety of their own home. So for county council, board of commissioners, redevelopment, area plans, zoning appeals meeting, this technology is able, we've done the same thing on the seventh floor of the commissioner conference room with that project taking place in the next month or so in the council committee, conference room as well. Also, for those people who do enter the county city building and the council chambers, we installed air sanitizers that clean and recirculate the air to provide an extra level of protection against airborne illnesses. Not only have we taken steps to keep the public safe and healthy, we have also been committed to the health and safety of our employees. I am proud of the fact that during our building closures, we stood steadfast with our employees, never wavering from our commitment to ensure that their salaries and benefits would continue through no fault of their own because they were unable to come to work. We made that commitment, and I'm very proud of both the board of commissioners and our council members as well, that we made that commitment to our employees because our employees always make the commitment to us. No one goes into public service to get rich, but it's nice to know that our employees did not have to worry about that when they had other things that that might have needed to worry about. We were able to maintain access for our employees to our popular employee clinic, which just celebrated its 10th anniversary. This partnership with Beacon Health System is another tremendous resource for our employees and their families. By increasing access to healthcare, the clinic has been able to see patients who otherwise might not see a doctor on a regular basis. I remember the very first patient that came in the employee clinic was a county employee, and they were not feeling well. They had been to their primary care doc and they just said, oh, you've got a cold, you got a flu, don't worry about it. Because we have more of a preventative care model in our clinic, the doctor sat down for 15 minutes and talked with this employee. They ran some tests and they discovered early onset cancer. That was a terrible diagnosis to get, but had it not been for our clinic, that employee may have never gotten that diagnosis. So because of that, because of the fast action that was taken, that issue was addressed and the employee is in in fine health today. That's the impact that we can have. Sure, it helps us save money on our health insurance costs, but more importantly, provides a resource to every county employee that could literally save their lives. Another benefit for our employees is the branded apparel. We did, we launched a new order form and it wrapped up the end of July, and over six, almost 1,600 pieces of clothing were purchased at a heavily discounted rate by our employees. That's another thing we can do to help provide something to wear to the county, increase professionalism, and also make it more affordable to them. We spent over $8 million of CARES Act funding to increase pay for our employees who were most directly impacted, had most interactions during COVID. We also provided hundreds of thousands of dollars of PPE to other local municipalities, cities, towns, and agencies. We made long-needed enhancements to the county jail to increase safety and adding more video conferencing capabilities. In literally two weeks, we found out we're getting $8 million for the emergency rental assistance program. We got the money and then we went into action. And as of today, we've had more than 1,000 people received assistance with hundreds more being processed as we speak. And a total of $4 million has been dispersed to those people who need it most, so families can help stay in their homes and stay where they live. So that's one less burden that they have to endure. Our estimates show that we should move the rest of that $8 million into the places that need it. And one of the great things that we did in St. Joe County is we empowered our local not-for-profits. So Real Services, St. Vincent, other agencies who kind of do this, instead of the county trying to do it ourselves, we empowered those people who already do it. They know the citizens, they know the people, they're participants. So we work with them, which is a much more effective way to get those resources in the hands of those people that need it the most. In addition to the employee of the month that we had been doing, the commissioners are now, as we just discovered, acknowledging citizen, business, and youth of the month. It's important that we honor those people who are doing great things in our community. To foster sense of community for our employees, Commissioner Dieter has formed an employee softball team. Any community organization is encouraged to schedule a game against the commish crew. Commissioner Dieter also organized and made available a self-defense training class for our employees, not necessarily connected to the two. Under the leadership of Commissioner Fleming, St. Joseph County became the first county in Indiana to join AARP's network of age-friendly states and communities. Her community recently completed the survey assessment phase of this five-year program and will meet to analyze the data and conduct in-person commit community assessments. These results will help make St. Joseph County a more welcoming place for people of all ages, especially our growing elderly population. While I'm proud of how well we weathered the storm that was 2020, our work is just beginning. I applaud your commitment to infrastructure and discussing a $4 million investment in our paving program to replace those revenues that we lost and strongly support the passage of that appropriation in a few minutes. Get by with investing in body cams for our county police, enhancement of community-wide drinking water study. We're taking great strides in protecting our public health and safety. I look forward to continuing conversations on how best to utilize the remaining American Rescue Plan funds so we can make them as transformative for our community as we can. The last time I stood before you, 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 what, 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 before you, I wrapped up the state of the county by urging you to modify the way PSAP is funded. So I applaud the efforts that led to creating a new, more equitable funding mechanism, which comes that may take action tonight. And I urge all council members to vote in favor of this, of these resolutions. This is an opportunity to equitably fund dispatch services for decade to come and remove the burden of dispatch services from the county and both cities and place it more equitably on every citizen who uses that because rest assured, when we dial 911, we want that call answered. So I also applaud the efforts that that both council and commissioners made to increase the salaries and compensation for those folks as well. Because we were the very best people. When we're in a time of our greatest need, we want the best people handling those situations. I'm pleased to say that as we emerge from the COVID pandemic, the state of our county has never been stronger and our best days are still ahead. Thank you for everything that you do as a county council to help make our county as successful as it is. And in talking with other commissioners and other elected officials across the state, we truly do it right here in St. Joe County. We don't always agree, but we work in unison. And I appreciate all the efforts that we have between the auditor's office, the county council, and the board of commissioners. Thank you again for your time tonight. May God continue to bless St. Joseph County, the state of Indiana, and our United States of America. Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, report from any council special committee. Hearing none, next.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I was dazed off there a little bit. I've got a couple of things from the Energy Savings Committee, like to bring up, sent this information out to everybody a few weeks ago, and there's some housecleaning things. First of all, we could talk about this later, but whether or not we're going to have them come and give a presentation at our committee meeting about that. But two things I'd like to get done tonight is a decision on whether or not we'd like them to continue with the monitoring. The first two years were free. It's $9,800 for the next year, and then there's investment. It goes up a couple hundred bucks every year after that. And what I, and myself and John Burke both said along is that once it's in place and you know that it's working, there's really not much point in continuing to pay for that because unless it falls apart, it's going to continue to save that money, right? It's the only caveat to that is that with last year being such an oddball year, the energy usage, do we want to pay the money to get one year this year of much more, you know, the facilities being used like they're going to be used to see what the actual savings is? And then the other item would be signing that DLGF, giving Raffiel the authority to sign that DLGF form. So those two things.
Comments, discussion?
Corey, I have a question. So do you think there's still some value to be had by maybe extending that for one more year?
Again, I could argue both sides because again, I don't think it's going to improve. I think all of the mitigations that we put in place are there. I think the savings is happening. But in order for us to see what that actually is, is it worth doing it for another year when we're actually using it? Is it worth $9,800 to get a reasonable, normal year's worth of data?
We kind of hit all the low-hanging fruit, I think, when we did the deferred maintenance projects with the original energy savings contract. Are there other deferred maintenance products that are going to be upcoming that that could help identify? We probably should put on a list for things we could look at or to address going forward for future energy savings. That's kind of where my question was going.
Potentially.
I think I could support it for another year, at least if there were more savings to be had to save more money, to make our government more efficient and more energy conscious. And I could see supporting that for another year. That's just my opinion. But I would make a motion to support having President Morton sign the letter for the DLGF. So I make a motion to support.
All in favor of the DLGF?
I was saying that as long as we take the money out of Dalton's bucket.
Good idea.
Everybody okay with me signing that letter for DLGF? Yes, okay. So back to the energy savings, any comments, any other comments or questions or concerns?
I make a motion to spend a $9,800 if we didn't do that already.
And specify that it's just for one year. I don't think there's any point in doing it. It's available for 10 years. We're not going to see anything in year eight that we don't see in year three.
Can you have them come back? Can you have them come back like every three years?
Absolutely. I mean, they can come back and give us the report. I'm talking about the actual monitoring it every year to see to get that report that you see. We're going to see that anyways.
Yeah, I mean, every year.
But you're saying if we do it this year, maybe have them come back two or three years later?
Yeah, yeah, to
to monitor it for a whole year.
In the future, but you know, if we're on track for a couple of years, it might be nice to know how things look in five.
Certain that they would be happy to, but I can't speak for performance services.
I'm in favor of one more year.
Any other comments? So Mr. Root? So there's a motion in the second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. For one more year.
You'll sign the form and send it off, and I'll let them know about the other.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, resolutions. Clerk, will you please read bill number eighty-five twenty-one?
Eighty-five twenty-one. Resolution of the San Jose County Council commending the San Jose County Health Department and health officials for handling of the COVID-19 pandemic. Petitioner, county council.
Before we read the actual resolution, just want to make this part of the public record. There is no Indiana code requirement for a public hearing for consideration of a ceremonial resolution that has no legal effect. It is merely an expression of the county council's opinion on the item being considered. Mr. Cantor Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution of the San Joseph County Council commending the San Joseph County Health Department and health officials for handling of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas on March sixth, twenty twenty, the governor of the state of Indiana issued executive order twenty dash oh two, which declared a public health emergency exists throughout the state of Indiana as a result of the coronavirus disease twenty nineteen COVID-19 outbreak in the United States and a confirmed report that the disease had spread to the state of Indiana. And whereas on March eleventh, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 to be a global pandemic. And on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the President of the United States declared a national emergency with respect to this dangerous virus, which is still ongoing. And whereas the United States, the state of Indiana and San Joseph County, Indiana are now facing a new variant Delta strain of COVID-19. And whereas the San Joseph County Health Department and the San Joseph County Health Officer, Dr. Robert Einters and Deputy Health Officer Mark Fox have been instrumental in the efforts to fight COVID-19 in San Joseph County, including meeting with, meeting regularly with local health officials and hospitals, the South Bend Chamber of Commerce and city and county leaders to inform stakeholders of the ongoing efforts regarding COVID-19 prevention, mitigation and treatment. Issuing weekly statements on the status of COVID-19 in San Jose, in the San Joseph County community, taking guidance from Governor Holcomb and the state, the State Department of Health led by Dr. Chris Box, and taking the onus off local business to make and enforce their own masking requirements by issuing a countywide mask requirement to keep community members and workers safer from COVID-19. And whereas the San Joseph County Health Department, Doctors Einters and Fox, continue to take steps to keep San Joseph County safe from COVID-19 by doing outstanding job of establishing and operating a vaccine clinic serving all county residents as soon as the COVID-19 vaccines became available. The department administered a total of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight vaccines at the St. Hedwig Vaccination Clinic. It continues to find ways to extend the COVID-19 vaccine into areas of the county with persistent low rates of vaccination. And whereas the San Joseph County Health Department and Doctors Einters and Fox have been recognized by Governor Holcomb and Dr. Box for providing outstanding leadership on controlling COVID-19 through mitigation efforts such as mask orders and social distancing requirements, and have received many accolades for delivering COVID-19 vaccines so efficiently, including the submission of many supportive and thankful letters to the South Bend Tribune. And whereas the San Joseph County Council wishes to commend the San Joseph County Health Department and the San Joseph County Health Officer and Deputy Health Officer for all of their efforts at keeping San Joseph County, Indiana as safe as possible from COVID-19. Now therefore be resolved by the San Joseph County Council that section one, on behalf of the citizens of San Joseph County, Indiana and the San Joseph County Council, we commend and recognize the San Joseph County Health Department and San Joseph County Health Officer, Dr. Robert Einters and Deputy Health Officer, Dr. Mark Fox, for their efforts at guiding our residents through the COVID-19 pandemic that swept through our cities, county and state this past year.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor Ricky. Any comments or questions from council?
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Katanzright.
Commissioner Costelli alluded to it earlier in his presentation. I don't want to be duplicative. However, I do want to commend the clinic that was put up at St. Hedwig. Happy having to use that myself for family and friends. The immense amount of volunteers and the, I'm just so proud of the fact that the community came together and nurses came out of retirement, physicians came out of retirement, people that had, you know, any kind of medical training, or maybe not even medical training, people from my own church, I mean, just were there in droves helping out, trying to get us through this pandemic as a community. So I can't be more proud of the the efforts that the health department put together, putting that clinic together and the immense amount of volunteers that came out to help make our community healthier and get us to where we are today. So I just wanted to mention that and I'll be glad to support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzright. Any other comments from any council member? Mr. Root?
I'm deeply disappointed that the council is leaving the public's voice out of their decision to pass a resolution that will honor the health department tonight. Because the council will not allow the people who have come here tonight to speak freely about the resolution, I will read their open letter into the record. It's not necessarily all of my opinions and thoughts, but these were the opinions of the people who wanted to speak and were not allowed to tonight. The members of the St. Joseph County Council, we urge you not to honor it well. We urge you not to honor the St. Joseph County Health Department with a resolution commending them for their handling of COVID-19. We feel that the office is both politicized and has been revealed by, been revealed by many recent news articles and more focused on scaring the citizens of this county and controlling them than providing them with the information they need to make their own health decisions. It is especially disconcerting that Mark Fox is already advising the students not to go back into school in person and that he's already warning of a future mask mandate. He has made these pronouncements while our county is still in the blue, the lowest level advisor of advisory in the state of Indiana. It is also upsetting that Mark Fox continues to push for all students to mask. Even when masks prevent children from breathing freely have been shown to carry dangerous pathogens and hinder learning, communications and social connections. When children have a ninety-nine point nine nine five percent survival rate, there is absolutely no reason for the, to mandate masks and destroy the normal course of their childhoods. Mark Fox is out of touch and radical, and we cannot let him rule our county, and he certainly doesn't deserve these accolades. Life cannot stop forever for a virus, and we feel that the health department will use the variance as an excuse to keep our freedoms locked up forever. While we know that older people, especially those with cold morbidities, may choose to be extra cautious, we cannot continue to let public health authorities call the shots. Our own county statistics show that no one under forty has died, and after almost a year and a half of living with this virus, we know how to mitigate risk for ourselves. We are no longer willing to put regular life aside to be safe from COVID as our businesses crumble around us and our society unravels. We know our health department has pushed on public officials to enforce heavy-handed regulations in the past, and we expect they will continue to do so in the future unless they are stopped. It is particularly egregious that this health department is being honored by the county council for the illegal mask order it put forward in May of twenty twenty. The resolution specifically laws the health department for taking the onus off local businesses to make and enforce their own masking requirements by issuing a countywide mask requirements. Bob Einherz deceived county residents for months, acting like he had the authority to issue his own law to make everyone wear masks. If you recall, our county was the first in the state to issue a mask order. And Bob Einherz issued his order way before the governor issued his own mandate. When sued, Bob Einherz finally admitted in a court settlement that he had overreached his authority by issuing the order. But now we're supposed to honor him for this? How can the council do this in good conscience? Remember taxpayers had to pay for that lawsuit. Finally, based on, and I think I'll draw there, we urge you to reconsider, the citizens of Saint Joe County reconsider and withdraw your resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Any other comments from any council member?
I'd like to make some comments.
Ms. Hess?
I'm not going to counter everything that was in the notification that we received, the same message that flooded our inbox for the past two days. It was the exact same message. We also did receive message in support of the health department. I'm not going to read those either into this, but as Councilman Katanzright and Mr. Council Commissioner Costelli indicated, there were hundreds of volunteers that supported the health departments and their efforts for vaccination and mitigating the spread of COVID in our community. And I think there are hundreds of people, and I know there's at least a couple here tonight that would speak on behalf of the county health department in this resolution if they were allowed to speak as well. So it's just, this is a time to honor the department, all the hard work of the staff and the volunteers and the fast, urgent effort they had to take in order to address this emergency health situation in our community and our nation and the globe, as Commissioner Costelli said.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Any other comments from council?
President Morton?
Is that Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I appreciated how on the first mask ordinance, the leadership of the health department listened to the remonstrators and amended the statutory language to include a sunset clause and appeal process and termination power vesting in the council and made it applicable only to business entities. I plan to vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Tullian. Any other comments from any council member on resolution bill number eighty-five twenty-one? Hearing none, may I have a motion on bill number eighty-five twenty-one? Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number eighty-five twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any other comments from council on bill eighty-five twenty-one? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
We'll do just a point of order is councilman file online tonight.
I was wondering the same thing. Councilman File, are you online? Doesn't appear to be.
Okay, apparently not. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Cantoraki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to one.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eighty-five twenty-one was passed by a vote of seven to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the resolutions, bill number seventy-seven twenty-one?
Was that pulled or not?
I think we need to, we need to vote on it. Okay. Okay. So. Okay, bill number seventy-seven twenty-one is going to be tabled at the request of the petitioner. Okay, so also bill seventy-six twenty-one is going to be tabled at the request of the petitioner. Come on up, state your name.
Please state your name.
Address for the record, sir.
Peter Augustino, attorney, with offices at one thirty-one South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. Despite the great exuberance of my boss, Mr. Andy Costelli, who would love to see these things move forward. Tonight, this council is not voting on the amendment to the funding for the PSAP. However, that process has started. I think last time when you were in committee, we anticipated it was going to be started. It has in fact started. Mr. Triple and Mr. Dalton have done great work in moving that along, along with Mr. Hicksonbaugh and Mishawaka Council. So there is a hearing set for April, I mean, August sixteenth, Monday, to vote on an amendment of the local income tax ordinance. If that gets approved by the Mishawaka Council, then the next step is for another council to take action on that. If another council approves it after that, by other council, I mean either the St. Joseph County Council or the city of South Bend. If that occurs, then the local income tax ordinance will be deemed amended. And that will then trigger the revised funding formula and backup funding that's covered by seventy-seven twenty-one. And going hand in hand with that is expansion of the executive board, which is covered by seventy-six twenty-one. In fairness to the city of South Bend, I have not had an opportunity to fully engage with them in terms of the language and the amended interlocal. My understanding is that Mishawaka is comfortable with it, although I don't have an official word on it yet. And I anticipate the South Bend will as well, but I think a little bit of work needs to be done on that. So that, that's the reason why I'm requesting that both seventy-seven twenty-one and seventy-six twenty-one be tabled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Augustino, for the explanation. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Just to be clear, tabled, we're going to return to committee. So this will be on our committee agenda. It's not being tabled to be brought back to here.
I think that's the pleasure of the, of the council. It could be, I think in September, Steve, what would the date be that if Mishawaka passes the lit ordinance amendment on the sixteenth? Yeah, so that, that is, I guess, at your pleasure, if you want.
I think we absolutely want to make sure that we have the ability to discuss this at our committee meeting in two weeks. So return to committee might be more appropriate, appropriate than tabled.
I certainly have no objection to that. I think that that makes sense. Yes.
Okay, so formally, both seventy-six and seventy-seven twenty-one will be returned to committee at the request of the petitioner.
Correct, Mr. President. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
And I will note for the record, I can't sport a shirt as well as Mr. Cantoraki can, but thank you.
Next on the agenda, our salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number eighty-one twenty-one?
Eighty-one twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Jose County for the year twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, treasurer, and well, I think he's on the line. He's at a conference treasurer.
Yeah, I'm on.
Hold on, Mr. Swaggart, hold on. Ms. Hess, committee report?
Mr. President, this comes with a full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Swaggart?
Yes, I just want to thank the council for their consideration of this salary ordinance. It would restore overall treasurer's compensation for the year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty levels.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none will now open a public hearing on bill eighty-one twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill eighty-one twenty-one. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number eighty-one twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Cantoraki?
Yes.
Mr. Root? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eighty-one twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number eighty dash twenty-one.
Norance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Jose County for the year twenty twenty-one. Petitioner, health department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes with a council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, this is Amy Rupee, administrator for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And I actually submitted an amendment for this appropriation. We are requesting eight community health workers as well as an outreach coordinator as well as an outreach coordinator for our immunization clinic, and then temporary seasonal staff to continue for our COVID clinics. This is a grant that we have received from the State Department of Health.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on Bill number eighty dash twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on eighty dash twenty-one. May I have a motion on the amendment?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number eighty twenty-one is amended. May I have a motion on Bill number eighty dash twenty-one as amended?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number eighty dash twenty-one as amended was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on eighty twenty-one as amended? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Mr. Kenaraki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Let the record show that Bill number eighty dash twenty-one as amended was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number eighty-two twenty-one?
An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, Portage Manor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Robin Chaloner, Administrator, Portage Manor, three zero one six, Portage Avenue, four six six two eight. This was amended as well. I think the one on this paper says eighty-two thousand, but we submitted one for thirty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twelve cents. And this is to increase wages for the nursing and licensed staff for the remainder of 2021.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on Bill eighty-two twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on eighty-two twenty-one. May I have a motion on the amended, on the amendment of eighty-two twenty-one?
Motion to amend.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to amend Bill eighty-two twenty-one was made by Councilman Katanzirai. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number eighty-two twenty-one is amended. Do I hear a motion on Bill eighty-two twenty-one as amended?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass Bill number eighty-two twenty-one as amended was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Canariki. Any further comments from council on eighty-two twenty-one as amended? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Mr. Kenaraki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Let the record show that Bill number eighty-two twenty-one as amended was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number seventy-nine twenty-one?
An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, Portage Manor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Robin Chaloner again, Administrator at Portage Manor. So this was eight thousand dollars from previous allocated COVID funds for, and we're asking for that for incentive pay, until we could get the increase for the licensed staff to cover bonuses, to get shifts covered.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on Bill seventy-nine twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on seventy-nine twenty-one?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number seventy-nine twenty-one was made by Councilman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Canariki. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Mr. Kenaraki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Record show that Bill number seventy-nine twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number eighty-three twenty-one?
An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, Prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to the, I don't know, council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Thank you. Ken Cotter, Prosecutor, St. Joseph County, tenth floor, county city building. As you will recall, we are, have, at a crisis when it comes to deputy prosecutors. Our comparable pay for St. Joseph County compared to every other county in the state of Indiana, we are the lowest. Our surrounding counties, I think I went through that with you all. We are, for example, Elkhart County, we are eighteen thousand dollars paying our deputies less than what Elkhart does, twelve thousand for LaPorte, and going through all the different counties. I compared them to not only our local counties around us, but also the large counties across the state, and we are by far the lowest. I'm asking that this year's salaries for the deputy prosecutors be amended to be competitive. Because we have lost ten deputy prosecutors in the last seven months, even with those raises that I am requesting for those deputy prosecutors for the rest of this year, it will require no new money. You have already budgeted that amount. I understand that I'm making this same request for the year 2022, and I understand that that may change. I understand that you have to weigh a lot of different things for, pay for employees of St. Joseph County. But the money is there, and we continue to lose deputy prosecutors. Now, I've hired a couple of people, but frankly, we have so many brand-new deputy prosecutors that I'm concerned about the safety of our community if we don't stop the bleeding. And so I am asking the council for this stopgap for 2021, to make those raises, and not asking for any new money. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Cotter. Hearing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill eighty-three twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. In light of all the violence and the crime and things that are going on in our community, if you look at the actual news coverage and things of that nature, we've got a lot of people who get arrested, and our police are out there risking their lives to apprehend these people, and they end up in the jail and the court system, and before you know it, the person's back out. And the first time, they might violently attack somebody, the next time, they might be killing somebody. So there's definitely an issue somewhere in this judicial system. And if we've got a lack of prosecutors, I can tell you right now, without prosecution, nobody's being held accountable for their crimes, and they're walking. We have to have good prosecutors. And I have a case right now that I just spoke to several folks at the prosecutor's office about last week, and I hope to God that whoever's prosecuting that case is being paid well and knows what they're doing.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Derek David Dieter. I live at seventeen forty Porter Javenu, Second District, County Commissioner. I've been speaking in favor of this. This is very important of county government, just not from our perspective, but for the community in whole. The amount of things that are going on, as we all know, is horrific. And for the prosecutor's office to maintain what we should in the judicial system, you know, as prosecutor alluded to a little bit, we're having kids who need to get seasoned doing misdemeanor cases now going to felony cases, just of the attrition and people looking to greener pastures instead of hanging out here. So again, I think this is a good move. It's very important for the community and everything else. I'm in full favor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this Is there anyone, anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on eighty-three twenty-one.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
I'd like, like to make a motion to return this back to committee until we can have a little bit more time to discuss this with Prosecutor Cotter before our committee meeting. I don't feel we had enough time to really address this.
There's a motion on the floor to send back to committee. Is that correct, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Send back to committee, Bill number eighty-three twenty-one. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
There's a, there's a motion that was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess to return back to committee. Any other discuss, any other discussion on that, on that motion? Mr. Canariki?
I just have a quick question. Prosecutor Cotter might need to answer this. The proposed increases, are they retroactive?
No, sir, they would not be. They are for ongoing from August, September, October, November, December, so I can start telling people that, hey, it's worthwhile to come work in St. Joseph County in our office. And I respect, Bobby, I respect the idea that wanting to talk about this, but as I think I told you, I lost another deputy prosecutor from the time I first spoke with you about this until the next time I talked to you, just a couple of weeks ago. She's going to the YWCA, she's working part-time, and she's getting paid more than I can pay her full-time. I respect that we need to dive into what we need to be able to go forward in 2022, but we're in dire straits. I'm short six of, out of my twenty-two deputy prosecutors I haven't filled. Those sixteen now deputy prosecutors are doing more, extra work to be able to make up for those other people. I'm afraid if we table it, then we're going to lose more. We're not going to attract more folks to come here, even though they like coming to St. Joseph County. They like actually the things that are happening here, but they can't afford to be able to pay for the difference from what they can get from another prosecutor's office. I'm not trying to compete with private folks. I get you're going to get more money in the private world, but you ought not to get fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars more going right across the county line. And that's what I'm afraid. We table it again, I, what am I going to tell the deputies that we have? So I, I respect that, but it is not retroactive.
Thank you.
Mr. Cotter?
Yes.
I do agree that, you know, we have, not just in the prosecutor's office, but across the board, woefully low-paid jobs, lower-paid jobs in this county than we do in other neighboring counties and other counties our size. And I would like to see that rectified. I think there had been a request for some additional information that maybe Councilman Krasinski had made, and I'm not sure that we received that related to who was receiving the wage increases. I don't know if that's, if I'm accurately saying that.
Well, you are, Ken. In going back maybe three months ago, when President Morton and I and Commissioner Dieter met in Commissioner Dieter's office, you handed out probably the same information that you gave us probably two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And at that time, I requested a lot of information in regards to benefits compared to the other counties, how many deputy prosecutors other counties have. You're quick to say how much money that entry-level person is getting, and how many people you have lost. But when you compare the other counties, you don't tell us how many those deputy, deputy prosecutors are at that other, in, in those other counties. And comparing, going on the website, you know, and looking at other counties, Allen County is pretty compatible to what we're doing right now with their starting wages. And I can go down the line on the gateway and look at that. And I also look at cases in other counties. You know, not just St. Joe County, but I looked in Allen, I looked in Lake, I looked in Hamilton, I looked in Marion. So when you go on Gateway and look at publiccourts.com.gov and start comparing the misdemeanor cases in other counties, I would like to know how many deputy prosecutors are in those other counties compared to their cases. And I have looked at their wages, and they're pretty compatible starting out. I agree that they're underpaid. I get that. But I'm tired of asking, Ken, for information, and I'm not getting, I'm not against giving the prosecutor raises or anybody in this county raises, but I want to see some more information. I, I can't be any more clear. I'd be the first one jumping on your bandwagon.
I think, I, I thought I had answered when you asked for it, but I can tell you now to, I, I can't tell you what all of the pay for all of the deputy prosecutors in the other counties make, because while I also went on Gateway, Gateway only tells you what the county is paying a person, doesn't pay you what people get out of grants, also doesn't tell you what is paid out of pre-trial diversion funds. So it's, it's a little bit misleading when you're looking at the numbers from other counties to ours. And that's why I actually contacted prosecutors from a variety of different counties, not all, not all of them, obviously. When you're asking for the numbers of how many cases that prosecutors handle in other counties, I can't tell you that because I don't have that information. I can't get that information.
You can get it off of Gateway, like I do.
On how many, and maybe I misunderstood your question. You asked how many cases?
I want to know how many deputy prosecutors at each of these counties have. You're quick to tell us how many you have or how many you lost, and what the starting wages are. But tell us how many, you know, if you can give us all that information, give us the other information in regards to what other counties, how many deputy prosecutors they have. Do they have ten more? Do they have fifteen? Do they have twenty? Do they have twenty-five, compared to what you have?
Then I completely misunderstood your question from before. I thought you were asking for how many cases a deputy prosecutor handles in those counties.
No, I'm not asking that. I'm not asking that.
Okay.
I just want to know how many's in each of their county, how many's there, period. If you can, if you can give us other information to give us the other part that we're asking that, at least I'm asked.
Sure, sure.
I, I can't speak for my other seven colleagues or eight colleagues here.
Okay.
But I like to have a little bit more information. That's just me.
Then I misunderstood your question. I wasn't trying to.
I mean, I asked for it three months ago. I asked for it two weeks ago. And thank you, Councilwoman Hess, for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Any other comments from any council member on eighty-three twenty-one?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzirai?
Prosecutor Cotter, I think, you know, you asked, what message can you carry forward? I think there's, there appears to be support for, for change for, for the salary levels of prosecutors. And I think if you're trying to recruit between now and the time we meet next, I think you can say there appears to be some favorable support for us making those changes. I think just with more information, that would help us out. I think the one, the question I have, we need to get an answer to, is correspondingly with public defenders, will we have to match these salary increases mid-year with the public defenders? That would be an increase that obviously you're not going to be able to fund through your department unless we have enough savings. But that could be another question, because I know that there's a comparative salary equalization between public defenders and prosecutors. We have to meet, taking appliance with the state of Indiana. So there might be another cost to this that we're not aware of on the public defender side of things.
Yeah.
We need to make sure of.
And that I don't know. And I, and I should have asked Jim Corporal about how those, that pay schedule is. I found it interesting listening to Commissioner Castelny state of the county address when he talked about how they have twenty-one felony public defenders. I have twenty-two prosecutors, criminal prosecutors, that includes misdemeanors. So I have fifteen prosecutors who prosecute felonies. And they do a lot more than just prosecute the cases that are charged. They also meet with the. They also meet with the police departments, they get called out, they review all of the cases that are presented, they make the charging decisions. And most importantly, that's not all of the cases that are presented, the public defender, everyone doesn't get a public defender, so there's also private world. And yet they have 21 and I have 22 if it's filled, but I only have 16 right now. I don't know whether that has an impact on the public defenders. Actually, that's a good point, I didn't think about it. I'm not upset if you guys decide to send it back to committee, except that I'm concerned we're going to lose more people. That's, that's all. So that, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I know that Jim Corporal is compared to mine, which is state. And I think the, I, I don't want to guess what the public defenders are getting. I don't know if it's compared to what my folks get or if it's compared to a percentage.
Yeah.
If it's a percentage, then it will have zero impact on the public defenders, because if the percentage is on my, the state salary.
Not, not you, it's a percentage of even what your, your, your DPA's are getting. They, it's based on that too, for the part-time public.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't have the number in my head, but we need to find out.
Increase with the deputy prosecutors, deputy prosecutors with the public defenders.
Frankly, I think, I think there's probably still enough in my budget money to be able to pay for them as well, but I don't know that for sure.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but sure the money is there for, for us to do this, but I'd be glad to sit down with you tomorrow, the next day, or whatever, to, to get the information that I'm asking.
Okay.
I am, I, whatever happens tonight happens, but I'm only one of eight.
Very good.
Any other comments from any council member on this bill?
President Morton?
Mr. President?
Mr. Root?
I find myself somewhat in sympathy with Mr. Krasinski's position. I also find myself a little bit confounded, because I think it was only about two months ago, we sat here and we looked at the front end of the whole criminal justice process, where we also had a very similar problem. And that night, we felt the need to rush everything through on a first reading and suspend the rules, and you all know how much I don't like to suspend the rules, because we had a crisis in the criminal justice system. If I'm not mistaken, and I may be, because I only saw the headline, I thought I saw no one of those great national publications that said we're one of the most dangerous places to live in Indiana or the country again. And it just, it seems to me that if we took the action we took on PSAP because we're in a crisis, that this one isn't too different from that one in the criminal justice system, and we definitely seem to have a crisis in the community. And so I am definitely sympathetic to the arguments Mr. Krasinski makes, I just, I'm a little confounded why we rushed that one through and then we want to slow this one down, when we definitely have an issue in the community.
And what's?
Mark, Mark, it's not that I don't want to slow it down, I didn't slow it down. It's just that we've had two meetings with this, you know, going back two or three months ago, with President Morton and Commissioner Dieter. And, and now, you know, I asked for information at the committee meeting, and we still haven't received it, or at least I haven't received it. So it's not that I'm slowing it down. If, if Mr. Cotter would have provided the information that I was requesting, I probably wouldn't be having this discussion right now.
Mr. Root, would you please refresh my memory of what that was that we rushed through related to the criminal justice system? What, what was the, what was the issue? What was the matter that we rushed through the criminal justice for the?
In June, we rushed through the raises for the PSAP, the 911 dispatch center people, kind of the front end of the criminal, you know, the person called in, hey, I'm being attacked, or I'm being whatever. And, you know, that was a criminal justice emergency, and, I mean, I don't, I don't know, but it sure seems to me like the position Mr. Cotter did is a little more further down the criminal justice road, but it just seemed like he also is in a crisis in the criminal justice system, similar to what I saw in PSAP two months ago, in my opinion. Although I am very sympathetic to Mr. Krasinski's argument as well. I think that is, I think you're correct, Bobby, I think you have a right to be frustrated with that. I just, in my opinion, I think the need maybe, you know, crisis in the community, he needs.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cantor Ricky?
It might not be the, the, the best solution, but it might be a bit of both, where could we pass this conditionally for one month and, and make it subjective on the additional information we get, and then continue it through the remainder of the year?
Well, that would, I think that would be contingent upon the motion on the floor, the motion in the second, if both council people would be willing to consider your suggestion and withdraw the motions that have already been made and that are on the floor at this time.
What was your, what was your? I'm, I don't, I haven't done the math, but I'm just saying if we were to go ahead and move forward with this for, for the August period, and then we could review, you know, get, get the information you need and then pass it from September through the rest of the year, based on that information, just so his more immediate crisis is, is addressed, and then your concern for additional information is addressed, and then based on that additional information, we can warrant if changes need to be made through the last few months of the year.
When are you available, Ken?
One o'clock tomorrow.
Tomorrow's a bad day.
You said?
I did, I did, well, tomorrow's all, all night long till midnight, you know?
Thursday, then.
Thursday, we, we can get together through, if that's the case, depending on if anybody else would like to meet with Mr. Cotter and I, I will withdraw my motion then, based on Mr. Ken.
It can't be the whole council, because otherwise it'd be a public meeting.
No, 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 I mean, within four, you know, just if anybody else would like to join us.
Ms. Hess, are you agreeable for that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's been agreed that the motion on the floor will be withdrawn. I guess my question to Mr. Triple, is Mr. Cantor Ricky's suggestion, is that possible?
He's withdrawn the motion to some committee, so.
Yeah, no, that, we, we don't need to do it retroactively, I mean, because the money is, is there, so it would not be a huge burden on the auditor's office if you were to move forward with this.
Mr. Dalton, you had a comment?
I, I was going to say something similar to what Mr. Hammond did, making a payroll go up one month, and if you decided for some reason it would come down the next month, there's
So Mr. Triple, what your suggestion, suggestion is?
We will make it work, whatever you do, we'll make it work.
It's fine to do what? Okay, so, so we can continue, because the motion by Mr. Krasinski and Ms. Hess, it has been withdrawn. Okay, make sure I'm doing this correctly. Okay, so, Mr. Cantor Ricky, I'm assuming that what you just suggested needs to be in the form of a motion.
I guess you'd be assuming correctly. And, and in such a case, I move that we provide the adjusted increased salaries for one month to be revisited and revoted on, based on the information we get down the line.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second. Now I'll give you, Ken, I'll give you a call in the morning.
A motion to pass Bill number eighty-three twenty-one with the contingencies that Mr. Cantor Ricky just provided, was made in the form of a motion, and it was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further council discussion on eighty-three twenty-one?
Question.
Mr. Katanzright?
The caption reads, in fixing the number of employees of St. Joe County for the year 2021, should it read differently on the caption? Does it need to read for the month of August 2021 versus the year? Does that matter? Should be amended to reflect that? That's, I guess, a more legal question. Okay. So this is an amended, it's the eighty-three twenty-one, right?
Correct. Correct. Any other council discussion on eighty-three twenty-one as amended? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Cantorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero. Record show that Bill number eighty-three twenty-one as amended was passed by a vote of eight to zero. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our July 27, 2021 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing now, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number seventy-eight twenty-one?
In order to appropriate and transferring monies for the purposes here and specify for the several apartments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill number seventy-eight twenty-one?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number seventy-eight twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Cantorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero. Thank you. The record show that Bill number seventy-eight twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Next on the agenda, land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number seventy-three twenty-one?
The Norrants approving the petitioner for a special use filed by the University of Notre Dame Duloc for property being located at 17526 Douglas Road and adjacent unaddressed parcel to East Petitioner University of Notre Dame.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number seventy-three dash twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sean Klein, area plan commission staff with offices on the 11th floor of this building. This is a petition for a special use to allow the continued use of the Cedar House, which is a Notre Dame facility, which serves as a site for university meetings, conferences, and as a temporary dwelling for guest lecturers. The site actually received a special use for this purpose in 1998. It was tied to a variance from the required 10 acres for educational and institutional uses in the R single-family district to 3.4 acres. The reason why a new special use is going to be needed today is that the university would like to sell off some property to an adjacent neighbor, which would place their acreage below the 3.4 that the original special use was tied to. Luckily, the current zoning ordinance doesn't have any acreage tied to the special use for an educational or institutional use, so this can be granted to the two-plus acres that will be remaining after the subdivision. As you can see, the site is on the south side of Douglas Road, it is west of 23 there. The site is pretty well screened to the east and the west, and the building itself is set back 150 feet from the road. As you can see, it in some ways resembles a large residential structure screening. And on the screen before you now, these are the, the four criteria in the St. Joseph County zoning ordinance that a special use must meet in order to be granted. The area board of zoning appeals found that it met all four of these criteria. No one spoke in remonstrance at this hearing, we received no phone calls or letters of concern, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Mike Dance from Dance Harn, Associate, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner, University of Notre Dame. As Sean had mentioned, basically, I was before this commission, probably 24 years ago, doing exactly the same thing. As he had mentioned, really, the only reason that we're back here is that there was a change in the zoning ordinance. This is Cedar House for the University of Notre Dame. It has been a use for the university for basically representing, for people to come and for lecturers for the university, they can stay there. They also have, basically, this is an off-campus site to do small conferences for just small groups. Nothing is changing from the building, the location. The only thing that has occurred here is that there was an interest party who owns a property adjacent to this site to the east. They would like to actually get a portion of this particular site, it backs up to Judy Creek, if you're familiar with this location. It's a natural area, we would go through a subdivision process to create an outlot for that piece of property that would be sold off. But the whole reason that we're here is the change in the zoning ordinance, the use will be exactly the same, there'll be no changes for the activities that go on at this particular site. And no one had shown up or had written any letters or remonstrance to this particular use. We would ask council for approvals, a special exception.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing now, we'll open a public hearing up on Bill seventy-three twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on Bill seventy-three twenty-one?
To send parable.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number seventy-three twenty-one was made by council, made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzright, I'm sorry, Cantor Ricky? Any further discussion on seventy-three twenty-one?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
I've been advised by our legal counsel, and I just want to make it very transparent. I am an employee of the University of Notre Dame, but I had no pecuniary interest in my vote on this matter, so just want to let the council know that before we vote on it.
Thank you.
Have a question. Mr. Nolan, can you get us a room?
I think you'd have to ask Mr. Sexton, who's in the audience, if he can arrange for
Any other comments from council on seventy-three twenty-one?
What, for a football game or?
Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Cantorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero. The record show that Bill number seventy-three twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number seventy-four twenty-one?
Norrants approving the petitioner for, petitioner for a special use filed by Nativity of the Mother of God Serbian Orthodox Monastery for property being located at 32725 and 32787 Early Road, petitioner Nativity of the Mother of God Serbian Orthodox Monastery.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number seventy-four dash twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We're now here to report from area plan.
Good evening, Sean Klein, area plan commission staff. Much like the last petition, this is an existing use. It's a, currently a monastery on the north side of Early Road, just south of New Carlyle. If I can get the presentation going. Okay, well, anyway, it's been in use for approximately 27 years. The issue here is it looks like it fell into legal nonconformance at some point when a portion of the property was rezoned from a agricultural, where a monastery would have been permitted by right to our single family, which will require a special use. This became an issue when the monastery wished to construct a new storage facility on-site. This would technically be an enlargement of a legal nonconforming use, which can't be granted per the zoning ordinance, so the monastery is now required to get this special use in order to make any improvements on the current site. As you can see, the, the site itself is fairly large, it's about 40 acres total. Everything is meeting at least a 30-foot setback from the side property lines, which is pretty much analogous to the development standards of the agricultural district wherein a monastery would be permitted by right. Additionally, it is also well-screened from the road and from neighboring properties. Once again, the area board of zoning appeals found that it met the four criteria for the special use to be granted, and we had no one to speak in remonstrance, no calls and letters of concern, and I would be happy to. and we had no one to speak in remonstrance, no calls and letters of concern, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. Andrew Helfrich with Barnes and Thornburg, two oh one South Main Street, Suite four hundred, South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to thank you to take your time this evening to correct what was either an oversight or an error historical. Again, no, as mentioned by staff, there's no planned change of use, but it'll just allow them to continue their activities as presently conducted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none will open a public hearing up on bill seventy-four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on our close of public hearing, do I hear a motion on seventy-four twenty-one?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number seventy-four twenty-one was made by Councilman Kenorecki, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any other comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the role? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tolyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kenorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. The record show that bill number seventy-four twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number seventy-five twenty-one? Norton submitting a supplementing Title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning. The San Justin County Code is amended for address and unaddressed property totaling five point seven six acres, located at Anabudding, one seven nine one one Turner's Drive, South Bend, from C Commercial District Site Plan Specific to C Commercial District Not Site Plan Specific. Petitioner, All Secure Self-Storage LLC. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number seventy-five dash twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. This is Ryan Fowles with the Area Plan Commission, part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning Growth with offices on the seventh and eleventh floors of this building. As well described, this is a rezoning due to a being site plan specific for being storage units. And currently, the site is per a site plan, which I'm flipping to to go first. The site plan does include a telecommunications tower in the front of the property and a billboard along the toll road. And it's the desire of the applicant of the petitioner to have some of the space at the front of the building that is before the storage area gate to be allowed to be used as office space. And in order to achieve this, they have to either continue to amend the site plan each time there's such a change, or just go through this rezoning to make it available for any commercial use. And that's what the option was chosen at this time. The property is surrounded with, we have the tollway along the north side, across the road for a little bit of residential, and then there's the golf course, which is university. And there's a couple of businesses. One is a law office and the other is a dentistry. And then there's a church to the south. And then to the east, there is a religious athletic facility. There's kind of a bird's eye view of it. Again, there's a telecommunications tower there. And I just wanted to show the screening of the trees that kind of hide the property from from the adjoining neighbor, which looks like a parking lot from here, but it's also athletic facilities. And the area plan commission reviewed the five criteria found in state law as listed here. There was no one in remonstrance or speaking in favor. So this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area plan commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Kevin Pachkowski, Veldman Service Center, All Secure Self-Storage. I have nothing to add to what has been previously stated here from area plan. And there's been enough public discourse on this. I have nothing to add to that as well. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Thank you, sir. We will now open a public hearing on seventy-five, seventy-five twenty-one. Is that a question?
They didn't state their name or answer.
Right.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of seventy-five twenty-one? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of seventy-five twenty-one? Hearing on the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
For approval, second.
Motion to pass bill number seventy-five twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the role? Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tolyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kenorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you. Like the record showed, that bill number seventy-five twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number sixty-four twenty-one? In order to submitting a supplementing Title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning. The San Justin County Code is amended for property located at five six four five eight Willow Road, three one nine one seven State Route two and five six three four zero Willow Road, New Carlisle, from a agricultural district to I industrial district. Petitioner, San Justin County Redevelopment Commission. Thank you, sir. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, unfortunately for bill number sixty-four dash twenty-one, it was unable to secure a recommendation from.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Fowles with Area Plan Commission again. I'm going to start off with this slide, which shows this is at the corner of Willow Road and State Route two. It is to the south is the proving ground, to the north is the recently, well, to the north and to the east is recently rezoned to I industrial property. And across Willow Road to the west is a few homes and agricultural land and and zoned. This shows the site plan is not contemplated a specific use at this time. And I'm going to switch back to, there were originally three homes as property, but they have since been demolished, so they're no longer there. And upon reviewing the comprehensive plan, the current conditions and character, the most desirable use, the conservation of property values, responsible development and growth, and in consideration of the remonstrance from two people, one speaking about the Kankakee aquifer and the concern of keeping that water quality, and also a second person speaking primarily about buffering. The area plan commission came to a favorable recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council for area plan? Ms. Hess?
Okay, Ryan, the remonstrance about the Kankakee aquifer, is there any merit in that remonstrance? Is there any concern about that?
This was actually a letter that was included a year ago, and it was something that this was originally applied for and and had a public hearing about about ten months ago or so. And I guess somewhere around there, I think it was October was before the area plan commission and November between for the county council. And so this was something that's been reviewed substantially, not just for this one site plan, but for all of the related site plans or or rezonings, I should say. And so it's it's been reviewed over and over and over again, and we continue to hold by the favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for area plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Aaron Blank with Lawson Fisher Associates, offices at five twenty-five West Washington Street here in South Bend, representing the San Justin County Redevelopment Commission. As mentioned by APC staff, that this petition has been in front of you before. And you're you're familiar with some of the details, how are there some facts surrounding this that are differences that worth noting since last time we brought this forward? So I'll run through those real quick. Number one being the county has developed some written commitments that restrict proposed uses that are considered heavy industrial insofar as to say that mining, scrap metal, shredding, metal scrapping, junkyard, slaughterhouse, sewage treatment, sanitary landfill, and quote unquote, heavy industrial uses is defined by the two thousand two comp plan are all restricted uses, along with the caveat that any wetland confirmed by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers or legally identified should not be displaced for industrial use. In addition to those written commitments that have been actioned by the redevelopment commission, there's an additional commitment being brought forward in response to the question about buffering. And that the county is in favor of buffering along the west side of this property, being Willow Road frontage, and are willing to further condition the development was prescribed to a minimum of a type-two landscape buffer along Willow Road. And based upon our preliminary planning of what that buffer might look like, the county would like to commit to a minimum buffer width of eighty feet as measured from the section line, which is approximately the center of Willow Road. And with an appropriate motion by the county council, the petitioner would include such language into the written commitments. As far as type-two landscaping buffers go, the main difference between type-one and type-two, type-two being more restrictive when there are disparate uses adjacent to each other from a zoning standpoint. Type-two is meant to be a visual barrier, a sound barrier, and there is some great difference usually referred to as a berm. Those are all included in type-two, and redevelopment commission is willing to apply those at a minimum for a buffer consideration. In addition to those written commitments, since the property was last petitioned for rezoning, the county has received several inquiries about this property from site selection teams regarding the current zoning, its availability for development. As a result, the county is pursuing gold or prime level site certification from Okra, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, which requires the property be rezoned for the potential use, in this case, industrial. In addition to that, there have been three successful rezones, as shown in the slides, within the IEC quarter development area since this property's original petition was not appealed. So aside from these items, the fact that this county-owned property is within the identified quarter development area is an opportunity to demonstrate that the county's continued commitment to upholding the tenants of the IEC quarter development area and high-quality industrial development that this area has been designated for. You have before you petitioned and received further recommendation from area plan staff, area plan commission, and is agreeing with two thousand two comp plan, aligns with the previous actions of this council, and resulted in the successful rezoning of Sebastian Kominsky Phillips Waters and Ward Family Trust properties in the immediate area. For these reasons, the San Justin County Redevelopment Commission respectfully requests county council move to approve this build rezone that can serve as a benchmark model for upholding the thoughtful, strategic, and deliberate parcel zoning practices that have been approved by this council in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Mr. Krasinski? Bill?
The chip is like, set your side down first, not like my side, it's like. Down first is like I'm losing my grip with everything we carried in.
I didn't want you to fall asleep back.
No, no, I appreciate that. I'm happy to, I needed the exercise. Haven't been to the gym yet today, so.
Did we not receive an email from you that there's some other comments or development that is going to go on there based on what the gentleman from Mr. Lawson, Lawson Fisher said?
So I I believe Jeff Ray is going to speak to some of the inquiries we've had in that area specifically. But I mean, to Aaron's point, one of the things that we've had are a lot of questions about why is this little corner not zoned industrial as everything else is? How does this fit in? What does that do to setbacks? We have ag over here in the corner and industrial and the rest of the site. So so it's 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 continued to raise its head. That's why we've brought it back for rezoning.
If my memory recalls, I think your email said there's been new development, so in regards to this property, so.
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've had several inquiries on on the the larger Kaminsky-Sebastian site, which this is adjacent to.
Moving the solar farm there or?
No, I don't think so. Solar farm is up north still, hopefully. Thank you.
Ms. Catanz, right?
Mr. Shalyo?
Yes, sir.
So I understand the commitment for the type-two buffering is something we would need to amend or incorporate into the the minute site. Is there any other commitment from the county redevelopment on any kind of recreational use for this property to tie into Benix Woods? Can you can you address that, or can that be incorporated into these comments?
No, I absolutely can address that. So one of the things we're working on with Lawson Fisher is actually a buffer quarter up Willow, and then ultimately to where the Ness Bajani and the Hooten Ditch come together a little further north of the site. We have looked at the potential to incorporate a trail system into this area. The problem we have is if this ends up as a trailhead, then you got to get people across State Road two, and that becomes, I mean, that's a that's a huge challenge. We've looked at the potential, you know, is that a pedestrian bridge over State Road two? Is it a, you know, some kind of thing under State Road two? But having people cross that grade across State Road two, it just, I mean, it would be horrible. So part of the challenge is there's the potential to incorporate some kind of trail or trail network or something into this larger buffer area. But but where it ends and how it connects and what it connects into are still things that we're having conversations about. So I I would tell you that the eighty-foot is is the start. Again, I think we're looking at eighty feet ultimately up Willow, but we have to work with the Sebastiases and some of the other property owners to accomplish that buffer as we go north.
Thank you.
Couple other options to consider, jetline or slingshot?
Yes, yeah. No, I certainly with the the elevational change with Bendix Woods, you could do zip line across or something like that, so.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Thank you. We'll now open a public hearing on bill sixty-four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Ray, president and CEO, Southland Regional Chamber with offices at one oh one North Michigan Street here in South Bend, here to speak in favor of this rezoning request. We're, of course, the county's economic development partner. Most of the leads come our way first, and we begin to carefully vet what properties meet the criteria that companies or site selectors are ultimately looking at. This has been the busiest year that we've had in a decade. There is a tremendous amount of interest in development happening. We've been able to respond to more projects than ever in our history because of some of the actions that you have taken in the past. We've had over forty companies looking at at projects. Those are in the automotive, electric vehicle battery, OEM, food production, for the most part, with significant proposed capital investment in employees. You know, this is a process that we go through. Twenty-three of those have ruled us out initially for a couple of different reasons. What, some wanted a building, some had a utility demand that we couldn't meet, some had a zoning question. Some of them honestly were ones we didn't want either. So, you know, as you have worked diligent with the redevelopment commission to put tight parameters on land uses out there, obviously, there we know there are some that wouldn't fit, and we and we simply don't respond to those upfront. So I think the action you're taking to eliminate any uncertainty is really great action, and it's really preparing this us for some wins. We are getting the visits that we've never had before. Obviously, I wish I was here to announce a great project that we had secured as of this date. We don't have that announcement yet, but I'm confident with the actions that you and the redevelopment commission have taken that will have some really quality development that really enhance economic development here, job growth, and be protective of the interests of the neighbors. And so I just wanted to voice our our suggestion or or hope that you approve this rezoning request tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Ray? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of bill sixty-four twenty-one? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bill sixty-four twenty-one?
Good evening. Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlisle. As Mr. Blank said, this has been before you previously. Last fall, came before the area plan commission. It was given a favorable recommendation to send to you of five to two. It came to you, I believe it was Mr. Kenorecki, that when the discussion started up, said, "Show us something with the acreage you already have before you come asking for more acreage." And it was a seven to two vote against the rezoning. So we come up again this year. Why was this brought up? As Mr. Blank said, and they've adjusted their story some now, as Mr. Blank said, nothing's changed. It's just six months has passed and we're allowed to bring it up again. And then they altered a little bit, saying, well, you know, there is some interest and but there's a nondisclosure agreement. And then they altered a little bit saying, well, you know, there is some interest and but there's a non-disclosure agreement. We can't really go into it. John McNamara, who left, could test could testify to the fact that he asked Mr. Blank, Mr. Blank, what has changed between now and last fall? And Mr. Blank said, nothing, just six months have passed. So now it's and so John, I to be consistent said, okay, I agree with you. And there was a five nothing vote in favor. They were just being consistent. I guess I'm asking you to be consistent tonight because Mr. Blank wasn't kidding. Nothing's changed. It's still going to be. We got this guy in the background. We can't tell you because we've got an NDA that we've signed. To be consistent, council has to say we can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition of bill 6421?
Deborah Doral, 21677 Autton Road, South Bend, 46628. Good evening, council. My apologies for not being here for about the last year and a half or so. It's been a year of a lot of changes and challenges, and I can only imagine the hard decisions you've all had to make. However, I, like Dan, am a little confounded about why we are here again talking about this. I think we have been here speaking since about 2017. And honestly, with the challenges this last year, I think we all needed a little bit of a break. And I thought we had done a pretty good job of stating our concerns and backing it up with facts. But I am concerned that a lot of people think that the environmental concerns in South in St. Joseph County, aside from development, are just a fad. And maybe the fact that a lot of us did not participate in these meetings for the last year made it seem like maybe the winds had changed. And I'm here to tell you that they have not. That the environmental concerns in this area are becoming more important. And if this last year with the attendance in the parks and the people that had to get outside has not made an impression on everybody here. And I would like to encourage the council to remember that the term green technology came from another phrase, which was green and clean, which meant green land, clean water, clean air, and those kinds of resources that are important for all of us. And I'm a big fan of the parks. I was out there long before COVID. And I was very excited about Buter Park and Howard Park, but I'm less excited now. Those parks are a lot of fun, but they are not green. And they are becoming less green all the time. And so if we are looking to keep our waterways, the rivers and the Great Lakes clean and the air, which we are right now having trouble breathing because of the pollution and fires and that kind of thing. Then if this development goes forward right across from Bendix Park, I would like to encourage, in addition to the berming and those kinds of improvements that are be included, that the lawns around these industries are not filled with chemicals that are washing into our waterways and our drinking water. And the respite and the recreation that Bendix Woods provides to all of us, which really is kind of a green paradise. If it is surrounded by more industry, will be very much less so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to bill number 6421? Hearing none. Petitioner, would you like the opportunity to rebut any of the statements that were made in opposition?
Certainly. Just briefly, thank you. It's just Mr. Crusoe's comments about no changes. I just want to iterate that those changes are that the commitments are now in place and have been expanded, particularly in direct response to some comments that Mr. Crusoe has made.
Can you speak up, sir?
Sorry. The the commitments have have been introduced, census was brought forward. So that's a change and expanded to include the buffering, which is in direct response to some concerns were brought up by Mr. Crusoe and some of the residents, I understand, on the west side of Willow. As Mr. Shalyo alluded to, he's he's working with the other property owners to expand that idea to get something across the entire west side of the IEC in totality, not just this property, but this is the only piece of property that the county controls and owns that they can make that commitment at this time. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing now, I'll open a public hearing on bill 6421. They have a motion on the bill. I'm sorry, may I have a most public hearings closed? I'm sorry, may I have a motion on the bill?
Mr. Morton?
Katanzirat?
I would make a motion to pass 6421 stipulating that the written commitments to type two buffering and future recreational space be included in the 6421. I would ask to amend the ordinance to include those written commitments.
Very second to that motion?
Sorry.
A motion to pass bill number 6421 with written commitments is made by Councilman Katanzirat. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on 6421?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
One question for Bill. I'm sorry, Bill. You don't have to walk all the way up to your phone. I know you're getting tired, I know. Is this in the original court? The original 2900?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any council member on 6421?
It's currently owned by San Francisco County, and I think is also an important factor.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirat?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kroschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Let the record show that bill number 6421 was passed by a vote of eight zero. The next bill, bill number 6521, was tabled at the request of the petitioner.
Is that tabled or returned to committee? Just confirming.
I would to be clear, I tabled this the last meeting.
Right.
Until they get like agreement.
That worked out.
I understand that they have not had an agreement, so I don't want to come back to committee.
Okay.
So that was saved on purpose.
Gotcha.
And it was tabled after request of the petitioner, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Make sure we're on the same page here. Clerk, will you please read bill number 7221?
7221, a fourth amendment to the San Francisco County Police Retirement Plan. Petitioner, Sheriff.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, council. Sheriff Phil Redman, San Joe County Police Offices at 401 West Sample Street, South Bend. This is a recommendation for your approval to amend our county police retirement plan to include a five-year drop option, which would give our officers an additional option to retirement. We already have a three-year drop option for our officers, and we are asking to include this fifth five-year option as we previously discussed.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the sheriff? Thank you. Hearing now, we'll open a public hearing on 7221. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing on the public hearing on 7221 is now closed. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Need for approval?
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number 7221 was made by Councilman Kanarecki. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Katanzirat?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kroschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you. Record show that bill number 7221 was passed by a vote of zero. The next bill, bill number 7621, was also tabled at the request of the petitioner, I do believe. Okay.
Yeah.
Return committee, okay. Was requested to be returned to committee at the request of the petitioner. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 7121?
In order to the San Francisco County Council increasing the San Francisco County Innkeeper's tax from 6% to 8% and spelling out how those funds should be allocated to help develop product, enhance tur- I'm sorry, help develop product and his tourism, stimulate economic growth and create jobs in St. Joseph County, petitioner, South Bend Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, this comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, council members. Rob DeKleen, EVP of the South Bend Regional Chamber and Executive Director of Visit South Bend, Mishawaka, with offices at 101 North Michigan Street in downtown South Bend. I'm here to ask you for your support in enabling the legislation of SB 164, local bill 7121, to increase the local innkeeper's tax from 6% to 8%. This adjustment will place St. Joseph County in line with other larger cities and counties in the state. Currently, the counties that are home to Indy, Fort Wayne and Evansville, the three largest cities in Indiana, are at 10% and 8% respectively. Additionally, these three counties, there are three counties smaller than St. Joseph County, Howard, Vigo and Hendricks, home to Kokomo, Terre Haute and Plainfield, that also have innkeeper tax rates at 8%. As such, this legislation for you levels the playing field to some degree. St. Joseph County has over 5,000 hotel rooms with 317 currently under construction. As a result, with an impending hotel inventory of nearly 5,400 rooms, attracting more visitors and their associated spending and economic impact on our community has never been more important. The new funds will be dedicated to specific uses, including a multi-venue sports complex in Mishawaka, by far youth sports being our biggest market. The expansion and modernization of the Morris Performing Arts Center, a key attraction in downtown South Bend. The transformation of the Padawatomi Zoo into a true regional destination. And perhaps most excitingly, a full 1% dedicated to the implementation of a tourism capital investment fund meant to provide annual leveraged investment into the tourism product of St. Joseph County. This fund is modeled somewhat after the successful regional cities initiative, from which we've seen great success in the South Bend Elkhart region. And also a smaller pilot program, the Tourism Capital Development Program that we administered from 2018 to 20, which impacted projects from St. Pat's Park to Newton Park to downtown Mishawaka, to downtown South Bend, to the South Bend Airport, and even the Lydic Bog. This is a generational opportunity to impact our communities and campuses and paid for by visitors to St. Joseph County. I'm proud to say this effort has garnered bipartisan support throughout this process. Locally, the Mishawaka and South Bend Common Councils unanimously passed supporting resolutions. Additionally, this body also passed a supporting resolution unanimously. That combines with with similar support in Indy, where SB 164 passed in the state senate 39 to nine and in the house 74 to 16 on final votes before proceeding to Governor Holcomb's desk for a signature. Along those lines, I'd like to thank Senators Ryan Michler and David Nizgaudsky, along with Representatives Dale Devon and Maureen Bauer for their critical support and efforts in Indy. This is a very exciting day for St. Joseph County and our efforts to increase tourism and fill our many, many hotel rooms. If passed tonight, this adjustment in the local innkeeper's tax would take effect October 1st. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from council, from council for the petitioner?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Mr. Queen? I don't know why I haven't thought of this before. Does does the innkeeper's tax apply to like the Airbnb type rentals?
It does. It's a recent development in Indiana. I believe it was passed in 2019. So they're referred to as short-term rentals. And anytime, once you hit 12 nights or more, the tax is basically levied. So what it does is it really targets Verbo, Airbnb, some of the locally rent like a champion, if you will, to basically just levy the innkeeper's tax on those short-term rentals. We do have the second highest concentration of short-term rentals in the state of Indiana, so it has impacted our receipts quite a lot. What it does, though, is it protects, say, the local homeowner that just rents their homes out for a few football games a year. They they are not required to levy the tax.
And that's 12 instances, not 12 nights?
12 nights. So it's so it'd be like, so basically if you're, and it's, we have seven home games this year. In a typical season, we have six. So it protects those sort of, you know, the other college towns and the other people around the state even that just rent their homes out occasionally.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Krasinski?
Rob, you mentioned the Lydic Bog. Is there anything else west of, I don't know, that bypassed, that's going to be addressed out that way?
Well.
Besides paving out road for Mr. Ray so he can, you know, so he won't trip?
Well, I will entertain any and all applications that we see. I think what's great about this, you know, I was introduced to the whole Lydic Bog project because of this process. I wasn't even familiar with what was going on up there. And I think that's just sort of a great side benefit of this is like, just think of all these projects that are out there throughout our county that can impact the experience for both locals, for both visitors and residents. But now there's a way to possibly say yes, you know, there's a there's a way to consider it at least, but you have to go through the process and adhere to the to the stipulations in the in the application process. But as far as that west, the Lydic Bog, I know, we actually did the, we helped New Carlisle with their the relocation of their historical museum and offices to right in downtown New Carlisle. We're really, we've been working with Dana significantly to really help kind of cultivate New Carlisle as that little, that kind of rural town within the county with a with a great experience. And then the airport, it was another west side example that we significantly helped with their soft scape improvements recently when they improved the visitor experience.
You'll notice that Mr. Krasinski will shamelessly use any excuse to get light into the minutes.
I'm excited to visit it. And then and now, because of what you appropriated earlier tonight, too, we can give them their full grant back that they actually got in in 2020 because we had to rescind some of it when our budget was reduced. So.
Town that won't die.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Rob, what's the last time you've been out to Bendix Woods?
Um, springtime.
I'd like to take a ride there with you and maybe get some ideas. I've had some discussion with Steve Slosson from the Park Department about Bendix Woods trying to dream of some kind of traction to get more people through the gate there, you know, because it's really besides the swing set, you know, what else is there besides nature?
I would welcome that. That's how we have the River Ramble Natural Playscape out at St. Pat's Park.
And that's what I mentioned.
Evy and I used to have consistent breakfasts at Peg's, so a lot came out of those breakfasts. So I would welcome a chance to go to Bendix Woods with you and see what we could envision.
You know, because this council a few years ago, you know, we went through paving all that for them and, you know, what to help with redevelopment, but there there needs to be something at Bendix Woods, you know?
Well, you've never seen a more bigger focus place on outdoor experiences. I don't think that's going to change what, you know, even when we do get past COVID or the Delta variant or whatever, I think you're going to see outdoor experiences really continue to rise to the top for for people when they're visiting any place. So all of our parks, Mishawaka, South Bend and San Joe County Parks have actually never been more important to us. Again, to just enhance that visitor experience, you know, it might not be the main reason you come to visit, but it might be something that you take in while you're here because it's here. So we call those experience enhancers.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Thank you. We'll open a public hearing on bill 7121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Jessica Davis, P O Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. So I'm all in favor.
So I'm all in favor of creating more revenue and specifically saying, hey, we're going to use it for this, this, and this. But the only problem I have with bills like this is they claim that it's going to be collected from tourism and people visiting our community, but in fact, a lot of our own residents utilize the hotel rooms and things of that nature. So these taxes that we keep increasing are putting some of these places out of reach for our local community people. So, you know, we have, there's certain parks and things like that. If you go to them and you're a local resident, they look at your license or your license plate, and you're not hit with that extra fee, where an out-of-towner is paying the extra fee. So if we're honestly going to say tourism, and this is to, you know, be paid for by tourism, then there should be some caveats in there so that the local people aren't getting hit constantly with extra taxes, extra fees. The city just raised utility fees on local people, and we've got a lot of people here that complain all the time that they can't afford to do some of these things. So I think it's wrong that we're going to say, hey, this is supported by tourism, when in fact, anybody who, from our local area, that wants to go to these motels or partake in this stuff is also going to be paying that extra price.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Derek Dieter, seventeen forty, Portage County, Commissioner District Two. I'm in favor of this, but as Commissioner Krasinski said, and even in President Morton's district on the west side, there needs to be an outlet. It's great that the people up in Michawaka and Graves are going to get a park, and that will add to the economy, but there's certain parts of our, the west side of South Bend and St. Joe County need some help, so I'll definitely get with y'all to talk about that. Plenty of opportunity for recreation and other things educational that we can do that us have started collectively, so definitely I'll get with y'all for something to come to the west side, so thank you.
Commissioner Dieter, I would like to echo those comments. And just for the record, I did have that same conversation with Mr. DeKleen several months ago, so I'm in strong, very strong support, and also Mr. Krasinski, in very, very strong support of your comments, so I appreciate it.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Mr. Senator?
Honorable members of the council, I appreciate being here tonight. David Nizgaudsky, forty-nine, forty-two, Seanion Drive, South Bend, and State Senator and District Ten. I'll just speak to this in a very short manner, but I do want to speak to some of the comments because I, these things were taken into consideration. What we tried to do at the beginning is try to balance where these dollars were going to go and try to set some initial projects that we're going to encourage further tourism and further overnight stays here in St. Joseph County. The Michawaka sports development, we have seen how sports development such of these kind have brought just in greatly increased investment, great overnight stays, hundreds of extra overnight stays. For when people are coming over, they're going to stay at, spend the weekend with their kids at a sports center, or they're going to come to the Morris Performing Arts Center. With those renovations of almost thirty million dollars, this is probably going to come in a neighborhood of adding close to ten million dollars to that. You know that's going to bring people out of town. When they come in from town, out of town, they have a couple extra days, or they have an extra afternoon, they're going to go to the zoo. So that's what we tried to balance with that. But with the Capital Improvement Investment Fund, that is, that's how I kind of term. There was kind of like a mini regional cities, and those are the dollars that can be applied in so many other different ways. I'll finish just real quickly by stating, the greatest part about this is everything that we see and we know that we're dealing with today in our nation, there's so much division. Yeah, I was so happy to be the author of this bill, but my co-authors were Senator Michler and Senator Rogers in the Senate, very strong bipartisan support, Representative Devon and Representative Bauer in the House, and then the final votes assigned by the governor, very strong bipartisan support. That's, and that's because of the reason of what we're doing, is it's going to bring great good to St. Joseph County. We're doing some, there were so many good things we brought home to St. Joseph County this year, and this is just one of them. The hotels and our restaurants are crying out for additional help. This is going to bring additional overnight stays to those hotels, and those overnight stays to those, those additional overnight stays to those hotels are going to bring those people back into the restaurants also. So I just see this as a bill that does great good for St. Joseph County, and I highly encourage you to vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of bill seventy-one twenty-one? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bill seventy-one twenty-one? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Approval. Second.
Motion to pass bill number seventy-one twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Well, it's never easy to pass tax. We had a lot of debate about this, and there's been a lot of bipartisan support. Mr. Davis's comments earlier, they didn't fall on deaf ears, Mr. Davis. We asked Mr. DeKleen at our last meeting about that, specifically, how much of the hotel stays are actually local residents? And he said, high ninety percentages, high ninety percent, high nineties are all out-of-town guests, that a small, very small percentage makes up global residents. So that was considered as we, as we consider this tonight. Senator Nizgaudsky here, you know, we always ask our state legislature to amend the state act that authorizes this, because currently, there's no way for the hotelier to say, are you a St. Joe County resident? Well, we won't charge you the tax. There's no way for them to do that. They're bound by law to collect the tax from everybody that stays at the hotel, so maybe going forward, a state amendment maybe can be made, if that's something that people felt passionate about, to exclude locals, to help make their stay a little less expensive.
Just to pick up on that, I wish everybody had gotten to see the material that we have here. There's some really great stuff and, you know, some proposed drawings of what Morrison would look like and these sorts of things, but one of the data points that we have here is based on the average hotel overnight stay from twenty nineteen. And net of all fees and taxes, that was about a hundred twenty-five bucks, and after this increase, it would be about a hundred twenty-seven. So, you know, we certainly don't want to ever create a hurdle for somebody to enjoy the amenities that we're creating, but, you know, I think the difference is pretty small if somebody were to try to enjoy our hotels that happens to also be local.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Kennericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian? Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number seventy-one dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of seven to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number eighty-four twenty-one?
In order to appropriating American Rescue Plan money for the purpose herein specified for the separate apartments here enlisted as St. Joseph County government.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number eighty-four twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
John Murphy, Chief Deputy Auditor with offices on the second floor. This additional appropriation relates to the American Rescue Plan, which is effective March third of twenty twenty-one. It's basically broken up into two parts. The first part is to reimburse the general fund or to reclassify general fund expenses that are eligible for American Rescue Plan payment. Expenses already paid plus our estimates of what will be needed to finish out twenty twenty-one, and that amount is a total of three point nine million dollars. If we don't have to spend all of that, I'll be the first to be happy about that, and we won't spend the rest of that. But we do make provisions for projects that have already been awarded, such as at the jail, or different, for different COVID-related expenses for our employees, like PPE, disinfecting barriers and so forth, so we have funding in place through the American Rescue Plan for that. The second part of the ordinance are four projects, specific projects that have been approved by the subcommittee of the county council that has, that meets weekly, along with Commissioner Castelini, to kind of hash out different requests. There are a number of requests, and I don't, Diana Hess leads up that committee. There's four that have been recommended to you, one, computer equipment for the seventh floor, for the committee, committee room, paving in the amount of four million dollars, mostly in the rural or suburb areas of the county, consultant services for a community-wide drinking water protection plan, and county police, police body cameras and vehicle cameras. Those were all discussed at the committee meeting in depth. The total amount of the appropriation is ten point four seven million dollars. The total we've received so far is twenty-six million dollars, and we're expected to receive another payment of twenty-six million dollars next May. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council? Before I open the public hearing, I would just like to make one comment to commend everyone that has participated in the subcommittee in the weekly meetings, and I've been able to attend a lot of those, and just want to say it's been very satisfying to be a part of it, and more importantly, listen to the dialogue, because it's been, been very good, very detailed, and it's been, that committee consists of members of this council, and it's bipartisan, I might, I will add, and there again, I just want to say thank you to the subcommittee. With that said, I'll open the public hearing on eighty-four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill?
Rick Ruskowski, Managing Partner, Fanny's Next Door, two thirty-three South Main, South Bend, Indiana, four six six oh one. Not so much opposition or in favor, but a question. I guess line item, if that's how these are classified, but seven, eight, and nine, could I get a clarification on what those expenses, I mean, it just says COVID, mask issues, consulting, and then COVID expenditures? So just like a clarification, if I could ask for that, what?
Mr. Murphy?
Seven, eight, and nine?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. I'm looking, can I borrow that a second?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Legal services, that's, those are costs that have already been paid out earlier in the year. It wasn't in connection with the mask ordinance, but the amount has already been paid. The COVID expenditures, there's not a lot of detail in this report here, sir, but in the report that kind of backs that up, that consists of a number of items, jail testing, which is probably fifty thousand dollars each time that's tested, testing for COVID at the Juvenile Justice Center is an item, the vaccine clinic, well, that's included in a different line item, jail feasibility studies are included in there, building assessments, barriers, disinfectant, PPE, anything you can think of, interview from a really small dollar amount to something a little bit more expensive. So there's a little bit more detail in what I have than yours, and is it one of the line that you wanted to talk about? Okay. Other contractual. Okay, that's a small item, that's fifteen thousand for consulting services. That's actually Sender and Company, who's provided good leadership on the use of the COVID funds, all the way from the American CARES Act money last year, now to the American Rescue Plan this year. So that's what that line item is.
I guess going back to seven on that, you said they were legal funds that were already paid out, or legal services, that could be a little more specific.
It was services of the county attorney's firm and related to, I think there were some, I don't, I'm not an expert in legal issues, but I think it was related to a lawsuit over the masks. I think there were some other costs incurred by one of the school districts related to that as well.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of eighty-four twenty-one? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bill eighty-four twenty-one? Hearing now, our close to public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number eighty-four twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Mr. Root?
John, just for clarification, item one to thirteen were already kind of budgeted and paid, but they were paid out of the general fund.
Yeah.
And all you're doing isn't really appropriating money for them, you're just moving money from the COVID fund-
Into general.
-stimulus money into there.
Yeah.
The new projects, the new spending are fourteen to seventeen, correct?
Yes. Yep, thanks. Any further comments from any council member on eighty-four twenty-one? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eighty-four twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our bills for this evening. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next is new business.
Mr. President, could I interject one procedural item?
Yes, sir.
Each year, the council is to review two reports that I provided by email earlier this week, based on projected levies for all the units of government in the county for two thousand twenty-two and projected circuit breakers. You're not to take any action, but if you would allow that note to be added to the minutes that you have reviewed those reports, we will have met that regulatory requirement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Again, Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlisle. I'm disappointed that I trust that my friends will have a, keep a close eye on the commitments that were made here tonight regarding the rezoning. I do have a, not just a question, just an observation that in tonight's Tribune, or today's Tribune, it says Elkhart is vying for a two-hundred-million-dollar facility. They're in the running for this two-hundred-million-dollar facility. And they're going to put it on a hundred acres.
Are you talking about an item that was on the agenda tonight?
That's not, this is not on the agenda. It's, it's from today's paper. And they're going to put a two-hundred-million-dollar facility, they're bidding on a two-hundred-million-dollar facility to put on a hundred-acre site. And we keep hearing from our Economic Development Department that over in New Carlisle, we need big area, we need thousands of acres because we've got big spenders, we've got big companies coming in here, and we can't use the brownfields over here because the sites are too small. How is it that Elkhart can use a hundred-acre site to bring in a two-hundred-million-dollar facility, estimated one thousand jobs? And you're going to be hearing this a lot, county, no new tiffs. And you're going to be hearing this a lot, county, no new TIFs. If it is going to create a new TIF to put that solar farm in north of 20, expect a big battle. For someone to bring a business in here and think that they're going to create one to three jobs, God knows how many farming jobs they're going to eliminate. I talked to one gentleman that worked at Gavillon Grain that said he will probably lose his job when those acres go to solar panels. And how many other jobs down? Truck drivers, pickers, farmers themselves will be out of work. If you try to bring in a solar farm and then to have that solar farm get a tax break and kick me in the butt with more taxes. If they're going to be a part of the community, pay the same taxes I'm paying. Don't create a special taxing district for them where they don't contribute to the schools. The lady from from Project Honey Suckle says, well, we're not going to have anybody in your schools because we're only going to create one to three jobs. So we shouldn't have to pay those school taxes. I don't have anybody in the school. Why should I have to pay the school taxes? I understand why I have to pay the school taxes. I'm part of the community. If they want to bring their project into New Carlisle, into Olive Township, they have to be a part of the community. They've got to pay the same taxes I'm paying. Don't ask for an exemption just because you're not using, I'm not using the school. I don't have any kids in school. I'm not setting my house on fire. I'm not running around with a gun needing police to to respond. They should, anybody who comes in there should pay the same taxes I'm paying. No new TIFs.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record. So you have three minutes to address the council.
Rick Ruskowski, 233 South Main, Finney's Next Door, managing partner, South Bend, Indiana. Members of the elected county council, I come here today in hopes of watching a democracy where elected officials act in the best interest of the constituents that elected them to office. Instead, I'm witnessing the silence of voices. In my many years of following the council, both city and county, I have never seen a vote overturned based on public comments either for or against a particular bill or resolution. I'm sure this may have happened at some point in time, but I cannot recall an instance that I can honestly refer to for argument's sake. So why squash your public voice? All throughout the nation and in social media, we are experiencing cancel culture and silencing opposing opinions and voices. Freedom of speech was and is a main principle of establish and maintaining this free country. A tort claim was recently filed on my behalf informing the county health department and commissioners of my intentions. It was discovered. It was discovered and exposed that the health department and others through many different avenues targeted, harassed, demeaned and totally or attempted to totally destroy not only my business, me personally, but many individuals, including elected officials. In most cases, because of a differences of opinion. Finney's was visited and documented by health department officials 16 times in 20 days open. 16 in 20 days. On most of the visits, the rules, and I put them in quotes, were fluid and changed by the representative from the health department and their translate translation of the laws and our rules. Every single visit was something different every single time. There was no structure in any of this. We were never even notified of a closure that we even had to close. If if we weren't watching the news or doing something, we would have never even known. So the communication between the health department and the public just horrendous, but I'm not going to go over the details of these visits with you as I'm quite sure nothing I say would surprise you or even cause you concerned based on the procedures or lack thereof that I witnessed here tonight. I'm going to read the summary of the filed tort claim. That was three minutes?
Yes.
And it started when I introduced myself?
Yes, it did, sir.
Is there anybody that could grant me three minutes just to finish this up? Of their time, would anybody willing to?
No, that's that's.
It's brief to finish this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's it's just the the summary of the tort claim, which I'm not sure if you guys.
You make it very brief, sir.
Members of the St. Joe Board of Health and official with the University of Notre Dame did proceed to issue public statements defaming Finney's. Most notably, Dr. Einhardt stated publicly to the media, have you ever had the good fortune of going to a Kenya, going to Kenya during the great wildebeest migration? The animals hip to hip, nose to nose, grunting and making all sorts of guttural sounds. Perhaps what was lacking was the very distinct order that one notices in the wildebeest migration. It is very serious matter, but that is what it's like. Officials from the University of Notre Dame joined in the chorus of defamatory statements against Finney's despite the lack of evidence or any violations of the law. My closing, the finish will be. I'm not going to end this with a summary of events, not allowing public input whether for or against this resolution demonstrates the support or lack thereof the businesses, citizens of this community. It demonstrates that you, the council, are all in with the health department and their draconian enforcement tactics as stated in uncovered emails. Draconia is defined as basically a death sentence. I'm left with assuming based on your vote that you are in favor of all the past, present and future actions taken by the health department, no matter the effects harms, the effects it has or the harms that adversely or inadvertently causes. Thank you for your time, allowing me the freedom to express myself, especially you, Mr. Root, for your no vote. Thank you.
Do you have one question?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Ruskowski, I'd just like, in your opinion, did the St. Joseph County Health, I mean, we've heard for over a year and a half how dangerous COVID is. I think we all agree it was dangerous. In your opinion, did Notre Dame and the St. Joseph County Health Department willingly send Notre Dame students or allow them to go in? Did they, in other words, do they have pre knowledge of the event that was taking place in February that received so much media attention? And in your opinion, do they make any effort to stop it to save their students' health or or were they playing a game of cat mouth with you?
Specific details of of one particular event that Mr. Root is referring to, I have many other instances prior to this where again, and just answering your question, we had no contact with the health department other than their, which we I mean, almost was a standard visit. Prior to the event that you're questioning that that the tort claim was based on, we had no contact with either Notre Dame or the health department, zero. If this, I feel, and you asked for my opinion, my opinion, if COVID was a concern, then why weren't we approached prior to, which we know they had knowledge prior to this event, at least two days prior to the event, why were we not approached to ensure that we were following the COVID guidelines that were restricted by the governor, by the local health department, and I think by this this council that that gave them the authority to do that, we were following all of the guidelines. So in following the guidelines, if they wanted to ensure that the health department was, you know, that for the safety of the community, why didn't they come out and contact us prior to? Instead of what we've later determined to find out they've colluded with the press and already had pre-conceived notions prior to even coming to Finney's the night of the the party in question. They'd already worked out their scenarios, which we've uncovered in emails. And then a few days after the event, no contact with us whatsoever via phone call, text message, email, any contact whatsoever. We we have to pick up the newspaper to read the remarks that I just read you. That was done with the media, no contact with us. We were informed that we were on, we were in thin ice and with one more violation, we'd be shut down. We had not received any information from the health department whatsoever, but had to read that in the newspaper and social media and other media broadcast. I I mean, I guess my whole thing, I know my time's up, but to answer your question, no, we had zero contact with them.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Just one quick question. You said 16 times you were visited?
Yes, sir.
How much were you fined in total?
Zero. Zero fines.
Did they fine you in violation and during those 16 times?
I I don't know because I never received, I mean, they would issue a report. So most of the time it was, we don't like this. So when I it was depending on who was visiting, which person would visit at the time, which inspector, the rules would change. So Finney's followed what was, I I can get you the exact name, but it was something Indiana health. It was put out by the state of Indiana prior to any restrictions being released for COVID, so that we were allowed to open up. We voluntarily, and I think there was only one or two other bars in the area that followed the Indiana guidelines for it was like, keep Indiana safe or I can't, I can get you the exact guy, but we followed. Those were above and beyond any restrictions the county had put on us. They were much more stringent. So we were following those guidelines, but every inspector that come out would have a different different rule or different thing and they want us to change some things. They said, okay, you changed them on the spot. Other things they said, well, oh, one of the health department officials will contact you. Or just there was something different all of the time. I didn't even find out about, I guess, the abate order that we received that was in the newspaper prior to us even receiving it. I opened up the newspaper and I heard we're getting an abate order and had to actually call Mark Esposito to get a copy of the abate order. And then it was reported that during this, the event that Mr. Root spoke of, that we were not, we didn't have approval from the health department, no COVID plan in place. Our COVID plan had already been in place and approved by the health department. We actually had one before they approved it. And then once we received our abate information, we had to submit a different one to get it formally approved. We submitted the second abate order and it was already approved. That was in October of 2020 or the under day dance was February of 2021. But it was reported in the paper that.
How much you were fined? That was, that was.
Yeah, I don't, we had not received fines. And then you ask about any other citations or something. I don't even know that we received a citation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And you were not shut down, correct? You weren't, you were not shut down?
Pardon me?
You were not shut down.
Shut down when?
At all by the health department?
I mean, we were shut down for what, four months for the?
But on order of the health.
Did the health department shut you down?
To be honest with you, I would, and I will make this public, the health department doesn't have the power to shut me down. Thank you. They what?
They could, if you were not meeting standards, there was a way to.
I'm glad you brought that up. They could if I wasn't meeting certain requirements, correct?
I guess, but you're.
Correct. I wasn't shut down, so I was meeting requirements. How could I be chastising the newspaper and our media for violating things that I was never fined or shut down for? But we're going to give celebration to the health department. What a great job they did. Thanks for representing your businesses and people in the community. Thanks, Mr. Root.
I'm Amy Drake from Granger. President Morton, you had the discretion to allow public comment earlier?
Ma'am, 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 public comment is restricted to items not on tonight's agenda. That that's the.
I am not going to be speaking about resolutions. I'm not going to be speaking about honoring the health department.
You just started out by saying I had the discretion. So obviously you're talking about what happened this evening.
Okay, so you don't want me to talk about how you stopped us from speaking freely?
About what was on tonight's agenda. That's very obvious.
All right, I'll try it again. The St. Joseph County Health Department is extremely political and its leadership has been heavy-handed and illegal. The health department's board member, Jason Marker, has bragged about how this health department has instituted draconian restrictions on the community. Dr. Einthurs has called those that disagree with him in our community, individuals who deny the validity of science and anti-science extremists. Dr. Fox has redefined herd immunity to not include much of the public that has already had COVID and recovered. The health department used flimsy data to justify a call for churches in our community to close and got reprimanded by the state government, by the state attorney general, excuse me. The health department repeatedly went after bars in our areas, trying to crack down on them with nighttime raids, even issuing abatement orders against them despite the fact that no outbreaks were ever traced to the bars. The health department is currently telling our schools we are in a code red, which by their standards means that schools should be virtual, despite our county being in the blue, the lowest level advisory by Indiana state standards. The health department admitted that it overdosed five people with vaccine at its county clinics. Let's also not forget that the health department has not only been sued once, but is now about to be sued twice. The first time Einthurs was sued was for his illegal mask order that he put forward in May 2020. Now it appears that on the agenda, I saw taxpayers paid more than 18,000 to cover that lawsuit. The bottom line is that the health department, like all governmental institutions, is political, not a little, not a little political, but very political. No one trusts public health anymore with all the flip flopping of the CDC and the aggressive tactics of the St. Joseph County Health Department. And our health department already threatening mask mandates again and criticizing citizens who dare to question their pseudoscience. I do not support a health department that seeks to control us and lock us down. The people have had it. We want to make our own decisions. And the more you stifle us from putting forward our opinions on lockdowns and masks and contact tracings and government control and honoring health departments, the louder we will be, especially when it comes to election time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Janikakis. I live at 13024 Fountain Court in Granger. I'm going to keep this brief because I have four little kids at home and I'm tired, to be honest with you. We found out at our board meeting yesterday that the state testing scores went down by 11% in our district, which would be PHM. That is a horrifying percentage. I just want you to keep in mind you are elected officials and you are here to represent the community and to also care about the people that live in this community. The number of businesses that were closed, not just closed, but forced to shut down, not because of illness, but because of the restrictions placed upon them, even when they were allowed to reopen. So many of those businesses, especially restaurants, were not able to either didn't have the staff because a lot of the staff didn't come back, which we're still still struggling with, by the way. There is a labor shortage. Restaurants, construction companies, you name it, everyone's hiring. The mandates that are put in place are absolutely destroying the community. We are talking about our small businesses. We are talking about our children and their education. My son did not go up in reading levels, not because we weren't trying at home, but because he had a mask covering his face through the majority of kindergarten and first grade. And the majority of those kids in that age group need to look at lips for word formation, phonetics, not to mention the kids with disabilities and hearing issues that read those lips. So this goes far beyond illness and whatnot. Domestic violence rates went up. Sexual abuse of children, because there was nowhere to report it when the schools were shut down, the inconsistencies by our health department, how the Indiana state, how the Indiana health department shows us in the blue, St. Joe County shows us in the red, which one is it? The job of the health department is to provide factual information and I hope people start doing their own research and not just paying attention to what one news or media outlet is telling them, actually research those facts, actually look into it and see if it makes sense or not, because blue and red are two very, very different colors. We're either in the blue or we're either in the red. So I'm not sure where the discrepancy is here, but please keep in mind that you are here to serve the people that live in this community. This is my first meeting. I will be coming to a lot more. I wish I had gotten involved far before this, before it's even come to this. But our rights are being taken away. No one has the right to tell me what to do with my own body and the choices that I need to make. And I saw you shiver there a little bit. But now when my school is asking me if I'm vaccinated or not, whether I'm allowed to come in to my school, that is an issue that is happening with my body. It is between me and my doctor, whether I am vaccinated or not. So I don't appreciate the shiver and the eye roll with that. Okay, because we are being. Because we are being attacked. We are being constantly asked, are you vaccinated? Are you vaccinated? Are you vaccinated? Nobody's business, nobody's business, but mine and my doctors. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Dr. Lori Stetson, 55693 Wild Game Drive, Osceola. I'm a business professor at Bethel University and I'm a student council advisor. And I just want to commend you for your Robert's Rules of Order. We always make mistakes when we're doing that. I'm here to say that I, like others here, I'm disappointed with our county's health department and specifically our health officials. What do they do? They send mandates and rules and ever changing recommendations felt in school, public school, private universities, we feel it. And I just feel like eighteen months later, we're kind of done with that. We don't trust them anymore to make health decisions for us. It's 2021, it's actually more than halfway through. We know what COVID can do. We know the options, we know our availabilities, we know the statistics, we can read the news. We, all our families have experienced COVID personally. We know it, we are not naive. So I'm asking you to leave businesses alone. I'm asking you to let parents decide what's best for their own children. If you're trying to rent those 5,000 hotel rooms, how about we make sure that this fall, people can use the swimming pools and those parents can go to Walmart without a mask to buy their Gatorade? Let's just consider the whole economy, not just, not just what the health department says. I believe that St. Joe County residents are ready and able to make their own choices regarding how to protect themselves. Thank you.
My name's Linda Bremer. I live on the south side of South Bend and I didn't know I couldn't give my minutes away earlier.
Please state your name and address for the record.
That's Linda Bremer, 3002 Miami Street, South Bend. We are living in unprecedented times. We've taken our freedom for granted. Years ago, we trusted the media, we trusted courts, we trusted our government, we trusted our doctors. But in these recent years, right has become wrong, truth has become a lie. Lies have become the truth if it's repeated often enough. Nothing makes sense anymore. It's the fog of war. What war? It's the battle for hearts and minds of the citizens. There's an effort to control the American people for reasons which are rapidly coming to light. The American people are waking up and won't be silent anymore. It isn't easy to find the truth out there with the level of censorship in the media and social platforms. Expert scientists and researchers are silenced and defunded. But they are speaking out and the truth is out there. I believe that COVID, which has a ninety nine point nine percent recovery rate, is being used as an opportunity to achieve the goals of this administration. Media propaganda, along with the health department's parroting the CDC decisions, have the American people terrified about their health, which has turned them into a compliant herd of sheep who were once free and brave population. The health departments of our communities have assisted with this with unprecedented power, far beyond their purpose to simply advise. Suddenly, what comes from the CDC and the health departments has become gospel. The only place many people are hearing any gospel, thanks to the mandates and closures. How has the health department impacted our lives? They've taken away our freedoms, restricted our businesses, ramped up fear in our cities and schools with masks and vaccine mandates and threats. People are losing their jobs unless they submit to the experimental device. Children are afraid to breathe fresh air when they are outside their homes because they've lived this masquerade for over a year. What damage is being done to their emotional and physical development? The risk of death from the virus to these children is statistically zero. If the health department was really worried about the health of our community, why are they not giving advice about how to ramp up our immune systems with vitamin D, et cetera? Why are therapeutics not used? Why are numbers of people immune to the virus due to previous infection, not part of the herd immunity? Instead, restrictions, masks and the device which does not prevent transmission has caused thousands of deaths, hundreds of thousands of adverse reactions, and has proven to be far more dangerous to the children than the virus. We are all learning the truth of what's really going on. We still have the right to think for ourselves and not be treated, threatened into submission. History will judge us according to which side we are on in this battle for our freedom.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Cheryl Schlimper, 54371 Mystique Drive in Mishawaka. To come to unite, to you tonight as a Christian, a woman of God. Romans thirteen tells me not to be lawless. Does that mean I have to submit to a government who has stepped outside their role and become a lawless government? No, because when I follow a lawless government, then I become lawless. We have forgotten that we, the people, are the rulers over the government. I believe America is worth fighting for and I believe our governments are a little out of control. And tonight seemed to be just one example for me. I asked this council to stop ignoring the power of the people and trampling on our rights. All people have the inalienable right to life, liberty, property, and the right to support and defend them in the best manner we can, and no other individual has that responsibility for me. The hierarchy of power in the order that the power is granted per our constitution is God, man, society, government. God created man, man created society, society created government. Government has the lowest level of authority, not the highest. If we invert that, we would be saying that God created man and we just know that that's silly. The government has a single purpose, to secure the inalienable rights of the people. Governments are created deriving your power from the consensus of the people, not the consensus of the society or the business with the most clout. I have watched this evening and I watched one business come in support of something and I watched two or three individuals come and be against it and you voted for it. Seems in my small mind that it was three to one against. During this pandemic, our health department has overreached their authority and therefore they've become lawless. The courts in the state upheld this fact to be true when the health department was sued and they lost. By issuing orders for people to wear masks, issuing fines to businesses who did not follow their lawless orders, the health department was demanding everyone in our county to become lawless too. And by you, our county council, playing along, you have joined in that lawlessness. I ask you, please, not anymore. As a person of God, I say no to lawless government. I will no longer be a passive Christian. I do not consent to the lawlessness that I have seen here tonight. And I ask you to not reward lawless behavior in the future and do not become lawless yourselves. I implore you to go home, reread the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution of the United States, and most importantly, reread our state constitution. If you return thinking that tonight was a good example of all of those, I think we have a bigger problem than I could solve in three minutes.
Jesse Davis, P O Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. So hopefully you're all listening here, because there's a lot of people in this community who are your constituents, who put you in those seats and elected you. You were employed by us. And Mr. Morton, you were very rude to that woman. You seem very upset by her comment, so I'm going to correct.
Hold on, hold on, sir, hold on, sir. No, I, no, I wasn't. I just, no, you know what? That's your opinion.
It's on video, it's not an opinion.
That's fine, you know what?
Okay, so don't interrupt me, let me finish. I'm speaking, this is my three minutes.
But you made an accusation towards me and all I did was let her know, okay, that.
Very loudly, very rudely.
It's recorded, I'm not going to argue with you. It's restricted to items, items not on tonight's agenda.
Can I finish speaking?
And she very eloquently.
But you were wrong, Mr. Morton.
That's your opinion, sir.
No, it's not an opinion. You show me on that agenda where it says anywhere that the public was not allowed to speak on that. That was just something you said. It's not written on that agenda, sir. So that, you said she couldn't do that.
That's the council rules. That's not nothing I made up.
Well, the law says that anytime you're doing a bill or a resolution, you're supposed to let the public speak. So it was not on the agenda that the public couldn't speak. You made that rule, you changed the rule for that one bill. Yes, sir, you did.
No, I did not. I did not change the rule.
Yes, yes, you did. I've been to hundreds of meetings, trust me.
You know what, sir? You know what, you know what, sir? Privilege of the floor by the council's rules, not Raphael Morton's rules.
Privilege of the floor.
Is, is, is basically for items not on tonight's agenda. That's, that's all I was saying.
There was nothing written in the agenda that the public couldn't speak. You, you said that was all you said. Well, she wasn't, she just said. Well, it was, it was very rude. The way you spoke to her was very rude.
That's your opinion, sir. I just, I just made a statement.
I've seen it before. So I'm just telling you, you're an elected official. So you should be a little more polite to your constituents.
I just, all I said was, ma'am, all I said was, ma'am, this part of the meeting, public comment, is restricted to items not on tonight's agenda. And I'll say it one more time. She very eloquently said, let me try again. And her narrative was very good as far as the way she stated it. She did not make reference to anything on tonight's agenda. That's why she was allowed her time. Those are the council's rules. Those aren't Raphael Morton's rules.
Nothing she said at the beginning about not being allowed to speak was on this agenda. And you stopped her dead.
No, she, no, no, because that's why she started again and her narrative changed. When she started out by saying, Mr. Morton, you had the right to do this or do that. That was a direct reference to what happened to the bill tonight. So that's why I said, ma'am, please, it's not, public comment is restricted to things not on tonight's agenda. And she, like I said, I'll say it for the third time. She very eloquently said, let me start over and she was allowed to continue. Bottom line.
I've never had an issue with you, I've known you for several years. She actually said that you did not have a right and that's what upset you.
No, she, no, she didn't say I did not have a right. She started out by saying, you know, hey, you know, it was my discretion. And that was a direct reference to what was on tonight's agenda. And that's when I said, public comment is restricted to anything not on tonight's agenda. And actually, when she said, well, let me start again, it was a very smooth transition and I'll say it for the fourth time. She very eloquently started again and that's why she was allowed to speak.
Well, I'm sure the 5,000 members that are viewing it on my community access page will have their opinions as well.
Everybody has their opinion. Okay, let, okay, let me say this. If it came off rude, I certainly didn't mean to. All I said was, ma'am, public comment is restricted to items not on tonight's agenda. And she started again and she was allowed to speak.
Then you should direct that apology to her.
And I apologize if it came off rude, ma'am. I was just making an appointment. I was just making an appointment.
We're having a little question, the answer session.
No, we're not, no, we're not. Sir, I was, no, I was responding to his comment that I was rude and you just suggested that the apology should be directed towards, towards you, ma'am. So that's what I'm doing. If I came off rude, then I apologize. Yes, I have it right now.
I wrote to Triple today, the lawyer for the county, and I asked him the rules about resolutions and if the public was right, had a right to speak. His answer was, there is no Indiana code requirement for a public hearing for consideration of a ceremonial resolution that has no legal effect. It is merely an expression of the county council's opinion on the item being considered. The president has the discretion to determine public comment really related thereto.
I'm not disputing that, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm not disputing that at all. I have it right here. That's what I read at the beginning of the movie.
You didn't read that last part? When you read the statement earlier, you did not read the final sentence?
I didn't read, I did not read the last part, but the point is, when you got up during public comment, all I was trying to say was, when you started off by saying, well, I have the discretion, to me, that was a direct reference to something that was on the agenda. So when you started again and said, well, let me try this again, no problem.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody in here knows what the lies, because that's one of the problems is when we don't know the rules and they're not available on the website. I had to ask Mr. Triple, unfortunately, he answered me, but nobody in the room knows him either. So that's why I wanted to read it, because you didn't read it fully.
You know what, ma'am? Let me tell you what I did, okay? I called him right away. When we saw your email, I called him right away and said, Mr. Triple, would you please make sure you respond to this request right away?
Raphael, I, I like working with you generally. I just wanted to make sure that was all read into the record. Thanks.
Has there been precedent, sir, where you've not allowed public comment on a resolution or a bill before?
No, there's no precedent that's been set, sir.
Can I ask you why you didn't on this particular one?
What do you mean, did what?
Not allow comment on.
Because, because basically it was a general statement, it had no legal bearing. Okay, so we're not required to have public comment.
I understand you're not required to, but can I ask why you chose to enforce that part of your requirement on this particular one, when there's no precedent prior to this that allowed you to, or had you do that before? Is my question.
I don't know that.
None of these resolutions has a public comment. When we honor the Boy Scouts because they did such a great job, or we honor the softball team that was here, or we honor Jessica Clark, it's not open for public comment for everybody to say what they want. Those ceremonial resolutions never have that.
So it wouldn't be on the agenda where we could talk about it? So according to the rules.
What would never be on the agenda?
If we're not allowed to speak about it, that wouldn't be on the agenda to say, okay, under public, you know, where we can speak publicly for three minutes now.
Sir, sir, we.
So it's not on the agenda that we could speak on it or against it before, correct?
We were not making any decisions tonight that affected the public. We were not deciding on masks, we were not deciding on vaccinations, we were not deciding on anything that affected the public. We were strictly recognizing, in conjunction with the state of the county tonight, where there was reports on county departments, we chose to recognize the county health department because yes, they did do a very good job of doing what they could under emergency situations, given a situation that was new to everybody. It was a new virus, it was the novel COVID virus. They did.
There wasn't any public comments on the agenda is what I was asked, correct?
What, we, we did other resolutions tonight too for Jessica.
That's right.
And for the, and then they didn't take public comments on her.
So any of that would have been subject to, at this final thing where it says, privilege of the floor, one to three minutes on things not on the agenda. One of the things not on the agenda was a public comment about the health department, correct? Am I right?
No, you're wrong.
How am I wrong?
It's the resolution that they don't, that, that agenda doesn't say public comment for the other stuff.
So it's not on the agenda?
Anything listed.
Whatever that says, however you want, sir, but that's ridiculous.
A politician accused of me of twisting, thank you.
Anything listed on tonight's agenda is not open up for a public, privilege of the floor discussion. That's just stated clearly on the agenda. If it was listed on our agenda tonight, it's not to be, it's not open for discussion at privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floors give people an opportunity to discuss items that are important to them that were not on tonight's agenda.
I wasn't discussing the fact that you guys did a resolution about, I was discussing things that affected the county. The things that affected the health, the things they were doing. Your resolution is your resolution. And that's, so not on the agenda, how are we limited to that?
But that's, that's why you're allowed to speak, sir. That's exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. That's why I'll say it for the fifth time. Ms. Drake, when she started again, I'll say it again, very eloquently, she did not state and did not direct it to anything on tonight's agenda and that's exactly what you did. That's why you were allowed to speak, that's why she was allowed to speak.
Thank you. For clarification, thank you.
And I'll say it again, if I came off rude, Ms. Drake, I didn't mean to. I was just making a statement that when you, when you started out by saying, well, Mr. Morton, I was like, ma'am, you know, that was making reference to something that was on tonight's agenda. And you said, let me start over and I didn't say a word.
Mr. and, and, you know, Council President Morton did exercise his discretionary powers along with the support of the council to not take public comment on this resolution, which is not unprecedented. I mean, like, this councilman.
And, and, and since, and since, okay, I wasn't even gonna bring that part up, but since Councilwoman Hess just made that point, the way I try to conduct business with this council, we are a team. I was not about to make that decision, I never have, I never will, by myself, even though I could. So I asked each member that was present tonight at our caucus, did they want to hear it or not? So that was not, for the record, it was not my decision, it was the council's decision.
I think the point of all of this is that you did a resolution recognizing and praising the health department. And you did it as a body of representatives who represent the people. And pretty much every person that spoke tonight about the health department there was not in the same opinion as you about what happens with the health department, how they've been treated. So, you as a representative of the people as a whole, you're praising them and you're not giving the public an opportunity to even say how they feel about this recognition you're giving to the health department.
I, I have to disagree with you, sir, because the gentleman there, Ms. Drake did, several other people in the audience did exactly what you're saying we didn't give them the right to do. They got up and expressed their dissatisfaction with the health department. But they, their narrative was such that it did not reference anything on tonight's agenda. That's the differentiation that has to be made.
There are also 270,000 people roughly in this county. So, are you claiming that you're representing all two?
Who did you talk to before you wrote the resolution? You didn't call any constituent and speak to a constituent specifically.
How do you know?
I won't bet your money on it. This is out of control. Give me a list of them.
What about the people at home who want to speak?
We were applauded for our ability to follow Robert's Rules of Order earlier and I feel like we are failing at that right now.
Excuse me, I am a virtual person, I would like to speak.
Well, we have an adjournment.
Go ahead, go ahead, three minutes, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jessica Repard, I live at 55023 Ival Avenue, Osceola. My concern is about the impending mandates. I am against bans or mandates of any kind. I do not report to my employer if I decide to become pregnant, if I contract an STD. None of my medical health is my employer's business. My employer should not have the right to mandate a vaccination into my body. Myself, I will admit this to you, even though it's not your business about my medicine, I have a clotting disorder, this vaccine potentially will kill me. I have natural COVID immunity, I don't need the vaccine. But I have to prove my status to an employer just to be able to continue to put food on the table for my children. You need to make sure that you protect the citizens' rights. It is your responsibility as elected officials to see it, see to it that no one tramples my rights. I already have them, I don't need to ask your permission to exercise them. You are responsible for making sure no one impedes on them. I will not be okay with any kind of vaccine mandate that is allowed within St. Joe County. Private businesses need to be held accountable for the fact that you can't just willy-nilly fire somebody for medical problems. We are not screening people for natural immunity before vaccinating them and they are dying of cytokine storm and other adverse reactions. You have got to take into account what this thing is doing. It's experimental, it's not even a vaccine, it's gene therapy. You need to protect our citizens from overreach and mandates from private employers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton, point of order, just a question for you.
You had your time, Mr. Wisconsin, you've had more than anybody else in this audience tonight.
This is a different topic.
Sorry, you've had your time, bud.
I get three minutes no matter what topic there is?
Three minutes, that's the limit. You've trampled on the rights of these people who want to speak out here virtually, they haven't had a chance to speak yet because everybody's monopolized the conversation for them.
So I haven't trampled on their rights, they still have time, you're the one that wants to leave, I'll stay.
I have no problem staying, I've been here till 12:01, 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, so I have too, so how am I trampling on their rights?
Well, because you're, you're exceeding the time limit you have when other people want to speak and they have maybe, maybe somebody on the virtual thing has to get their vet to go to work tomorrow. So they have, they have, they want to.
Are you saying I don't have to go to work tomorrow?
I don't know what you're, I don't know.
That's right, you don't know. So I'm not gonna sit there, I wanted to ask a question of the president. Ask you a question? You stated that you, you started the meeting, I remember with, that you weren't gonna allow comment, it was, it was your, uh, I forgot how the law was worded, but you stated you weren't, you weren't gonna allow public discussion on the resolution, correct?
That was from our legal counsel, yes.
Yeah, um, which I understand and that's your right to do so, but can I ask you, why on this particular resolution, did you feel the need?
You already asked me that, you already asked me that, yes, you did, and I answered it.
Why'd you feel the need to address that to begin the whole thing?
Because I wanted to make it clear, because there's two type, there are two types of resolutions. There's a resolution like we did tonight was just a statement of support. It had no action, it had no legal ramification whatsoever. It was a generalized.
No, 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 I'm sorry, you misunderstood the question, I'm not asking why you limit the comments.
To you, there's two types of resolutions. And this is why I read that statement, because this was not a resolution that had any type of legal action or decision. That's all I'm saying.
No, I understand that and I understand why you limited the comment to no comments. I'm asking why you chose this particular resu- resu- resolution to comment of why you weren't allowing comments?
Because I was trying to make it clear there again that there's two types of resolutions. I wanted to make that clear, that's all.
So you didn't have any pre-knowledge that people were coming to speak against this or anything, no?
Matter of fact, sir, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, okay? Because another, another thing I did today, when it was talked about that, well, under state statute, since it's just, since this is just a general show of support, another thing I did was, I got on the phone with Commissioner Dieter and I said, Commissioner Dieter, it looks like, you know, this is, because this is just a general declaration of, of declaration, I can't say it, of support, it's not anything legal. If you know of any people that are planning to come to speak tonight, please let them know that that's not gonna be allowed because I'm a firm believer in if people think they can come to speak and they won't get to, I want to be able to make, let them know as much as I can beforehand.
So you believe that this would have been a contentious subject right, earlier on?
I know it is, that's what I'm trying to tell you is.
But that answered my question about when somebody asked, have you spoke to other people in your, in your district or in your county? People do know this is a contentious subject, so I just wanted to be aware that you guys were aware of that and.
We've been aware of that from day one.
Yes, that's, that's, thank you, thank you.
Again, we were recognizing a county department, whether it was the infrastructure planning and growth department or the prosecutors department, we have discretion to do that if we felt they did extraordinary work.
I, I understand and that was just my.
And I don't think that people would have come and spoken out against that, so I, you know.
You didn't think people spoke about the health department or?
Yeah, I mean.
Did you hear anybody else or not?
Yes.
I'd like to hear what somebody else might have to say.
I'd also like for the record that Mr. Catanzerite is, uh, done with this discussion and.
I'm not done with this discussion, but I think there's other people want to speak, you've had your limit, you've exceeded your limit.
I think you've had your limit and I'm gonna see that you exceed your limit, thank you.
Let's see if you can do it.
I will, I will. I mean, is this an offer or what, you're gonna resign, what are you gonna do?
No, I'm not resigning to my position, but I've seen there's other people want to speak.
But you're taking one of the people who happens to be in your district.
You've had your time, Mr. Wisconsin, you've exceeded your time.
And I'm speaking with the president, I don't need you overriding the president for me asking a question.
Rules to follow and there are.
Then you can go to the bathroom or you can step out, but I was speaking with the president.
I need to go to the bathroom, I need to say, I want to hear what people have to say that might be relevant to what their issue might be.
It might be, but I was speaking to the president, he has the control of the floor, not you.
That is correct.
Sir, and I, I believe I did answer all your questions.
Yes, you did, and I was gonna walk away, thank you, Mr. Morton.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else which is to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
For your second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? The eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned.